Member certified closed session for us.
Mr. Chair, I certify to the best of each member's knowledge that Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley, and thank you, Dr. Beers, for your second. Appreciate you. All right, Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Hunley.
Hi.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Hi.
Dr. Beers.
Hi.
Mrs. Donner.
Hi.
Ms. Hummel.
Hi.
Mr. Dowell.
Hi. Dr. Beers, let's hope that this meeting moves with such rapid pace. We're off to a good start, off to a good start. All right, can we have the agenda approved as presented? Is there a motion?
Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Ordigo.
Hi.
Dr. Beers.
Hi.
Mrs. Donner.
Hi.
Ms. Hummel.
Hi.
Mrs. Hunley.
Hi.
Mr. Dowell.
Hi. And just for those watching from home, we are missing Ms. Young this evening, not able to be with us. But we do have a quorum, so we're going to continue to work. Move on to item four one. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As we begin May, we enter the final weeks of the school year. It is the perfect opportunity to recognize several of our employee groups that dedicate themselves to our students and the community every day during the year. Friday is school lunch hero day. We know that without nourishment, our students wouldn't be able to focus in class and continually excel. This year, our cafeteria workers have gone way beyond their normal duties as many cafeterias are understaffed. So tonight, let's give many thanks to our caring cafeteria staff who work diligently to meet the needs of our student population every single day. Our school nurses also support a variety of needs, from administering medication to providing Band-Aids and ice packs, and yes, even helping us navigate through a pandemic. Pandemic. Nurses drive the health and well-being of our school community, and we greatly appreciate them on school nurse day and every day, so please give a shout out to nurses this week. Finally, next week is National Teacher Appreciation Week. We couldn't wait and contain all of our thanks to just next week. Our teachers are not just educators, they are coaches and cheerleaders, helpers and encouragers, comforters and counselors. Teachers build learning environments that inspire our students to dream big for the future. I encourage our whole community to tune into our website on Friday to look for ways to share their appreciation with our wonderful teachers. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report for this evening.
That's great. Thank you, Dr. Heron. Any board member reports? I see you, Ms. Hunley.
Yes, I have the Student Advisory Committee report. We had our last meeting, and it was at War Hill. And we had the Director of Secondary Curriculum Instruction, Ms. Courtney Montpoint was there. And she had an activity for the students to do, asking them what would they like her to know, being new to our division, about instruction or activities. And so all three high schools said that it was pretty across the board, less, for instruction, a little bit less canvas, a little bit more hands-on instruction. They like when teachers got them up and moving around. And then as far as activities, they were all happy with, they liked being competitive and doing school spirit type activities. And then Ms. Bourgeois was asked in, for Ms. Jessica, who was not able to be there, she was ill. How would they like to get information about careers, college, and post-secondary planning? What's the best way to inform them? And most of the students said that Instagram was their number one way of finding out what's going on, that posters hanging around the schools or things that came on their phones weren't coming across correctly, but Instagram and even Twitter. So those were the best ways to keep them informed. They did not have a lot of suggestions at this point for next year topics, but we will ask that when next year starts, and that's conclusion of my report.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Any other reports this evening? All right, we're going to move right along. I don't think we have any public comment this evening. Thank you, Ms. Aller. Move on to item six one, review revisions to the 2023 School Board meeting dates. And you should see, or that is a draft revision document on this agenda item. And what the recommendation is, is that we move the November 21st meeting, which is a regular meeting, to the 28th, to give us some time and distance from Thanksgiving, which would then push the rest of the meetings out, in particular, the December 5th meeting to December 12th. So we're welcome to have discussion or questions around that. At this point, we'd be asked to take this up for action in our May 16th meeting, if it was amenable to the board. Any questions or concerns about those recommended? Eight changes. Okay, we're going to continue to move on. Item six two, review request for proposal 20230780, mass notification system. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Wall is going to present this item this evening regarding a new mass communication notification system. Ms. Wall?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, School Board members, and Dr. Heron. The RFP before you tonight is for the Division's Mass Communication System. Currently, WJCC Schools uses two primary tools to communicate with families from the Division, building, or classroom level. Through this RFP, we sought vendors that offered emergency communication functionality, like for example, Division issued communication about school closures because of extreme weather, and routine communication functionality, like Division or school newsletters and updates from principals and teachers. We received several proposals, and our committee's evaluation of the proposals and review of vendor demonstrations led us to select Aptigie. With your approval at the May 16th School Board meeting, we look forward to onboarding and rolling this tool out beginning July 1st.
Questions for Ms. Wall? Were there any significant changes or improvements that Aptigie offered that our previous vendor did not?
We've been under contract with our current two vendors for the last six years. So as you might imagine, technology has shifted a lot. This platform consolidates what those two vendors offered into one, which in our focus groups and surveys was a key point for both principals, teachers, staff issuing the communication, and then families receiving the communication to have a one-stop shop, basically.
Does that mean, like, text and email? Is that what those two, is that what?
Yeah, so email would still be delivered to your Gmail AOL Hotmail account. Texting would still be delivered to your phone number, but there's also an app that you can go to. So if you have three children at all different levels, you can see all of that information in one app if you so choose. Otherwise, the information that you just described would still be delivered to you, even if you choose not to use the app.
All right, I think this is something we can support. Thank you, Ms. Wall.
Thank you.
If there are any further questions, please do submit those SBQs before May 16th. Item six three, review request for proposal 20230818, Certified Athletic Trainer Services for Middle School Students. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Worley will present this item this evening. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Dr. Heron, and members of the School Board. The proposed Agenda Item 603 outlines the Request for Proposal, or RFP, 20230818, for Certified Athletic Trainer Services to Support Middle School Athletes. This request directly supports our Strategic Plan Goal Four, Safety and Security, ensuring a fully integrated approach to safety and security that encompasses both the physical environment and the social-emotional needs of our students. Our current contract expires at the end of the school year. This contract will provide daily athletic training services to our middle schools, after-school, and during games, evaluate and manage all types of athletic injuries and/or illnesses that may be sustained by students as a result of the participation in athletic events, and manage initial assessment of an athletic injury by administering first aid and emergency care as needed. The RFP was issued on January 26, 2023, with a due date of March 7, 2023. The process was led by Mr. Adam Otstad, our Coordinator of PE and Health, who is present with us this evening. The RFP, the committee met on April 11 to deliberate their proposal evaluations. And the RFP utilized evaluation criteria to review proposals, which included: experience in providing athletic training services to the students, evidence of resources and skills necessary to provide athletic training services, the extent to which the proposal satisfies the services requested by the School Division, and cost. Detailed award information will be provided for the May 16th Agenda Item. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Worley, and Ms. Hummel.
Our current contract is costing us how much?
It's, it's, the current one this year is $50,000.
But this one, we're expecting it to be in excess of $100,000?
Yes, ma'am. It's coming in at 115.
And, and any, like, what's the double?
So looking at, I have an extensive list of the things that they do, but with the proposals, currently, this proposal met all the needs that we have. It is the, I guess, the more fiscally responsible choice that we had out of the three vendors. Again, Mr. Otstad did participate, so if there's, if he can answer any questions to details of that, I'll have him come forward. But the work is daily, it's at least 25 to 30 hours a week there. And actually, we, I don't know if you remember, back in 2018, we had one athletic trainer, and we moved to two that cover four sites. So the athletic directors work together to make sure that all of our games are hosted games, home games are covered by the trainer, and they are there for also practices, anytime to administer first aid and to be the person on site during games if there's an injury.
So basically, it's just?
It's personnel.
It's personnel.
It's increase in personnel.
Yes.
Because I think our last contract was in place for a period of time and was very, was very reasonable with increased personnel costs. I think that's what's increased the cost, unfortunately.
So just like when we put it out to bid, that's what we're stuck with, like inflation?
There was one significantly higher than that.
Thank you.
Yes. I think if you look at the per hourly rate, it's actually still a very good service for the School Division for the safety of students.
And help me recall, it's still two athletic trainers. There'll be itinerary. Okay.
Two, but across the four middle schools.
And that equates to, like, a 40-hour-a-week job or 20-hour-a-week?
They're at least 25 to 30 hours a week.
30-hour-a-week job.
Yes, and then sometimes there might be special events. And the main thing is that we need to have someone present for home games to be the resource there.
If I might add, if we were to employ two people as a division with health benefits and everything else, it would come out significantly more. So it's still a great service for our students.
Any other questions for Dr. Worley on this item? Dr. Beers?
They're going to provide two individuals, right? I'm thinking, how many middle schools? Are they going to also have a staff as well? Are they just going to be moving around? I mean, the whole list of things.
Absolutely.
How do they?
It's, it's.
How are they going to deal with all that stuff?
Well, we, we really appreciated the move from one to two. And so it's really strategic that our athletic trainers, they communicate well with the four athletic directors and principals, and we prioritize where they need to be. Obviously, a home football game is going to have a trainer. You know, during practice schedules, they communicate, and they're close in proximity. Like, two will serve Toano and Hornsby, which are closer together, and then two will serve down here.
When they have athletic events, for example, are they supposed to be at the event? How can, if you get four or five different events going on, or is that all part of the scheduling?
It's part of the scheduling. Yes, and it is challenging, but they work miracles with making sure we have people available.
It just sounds like a real challenge. And we only had one before?
Yes. We went, we moved to two trainers in 2020.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Worley. Okay. Item six four, review purchase requests and subscription for Raptor Technologies.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're anticipating a potential change in some of our services with regard to safety and security, and Mr. Kieber is going to present the information this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, members of the School Board. The presentation this evening, or agenda item, is aligned to some of the findings in the Threat Risk Vulnerability Assessment that was shared with the Board in the spring of last year. And you may recall some conversation with Ms. Bourgeois in April of this year, where we described four main areas from the Threat Risk Vulnerability Assessment that we were attempting organizationally to address. One of those areas was personnel. You're aware of a personnel request that went in for a supervisor for emergency management and safety, and some grants for SSOs. The other area that you'll recall is sort of in the process procedure training realm, and the Raptor communication tool fits into that capacity. We've also shared with you some internal equipment purchases that need to occur for the School Division. You approved some of that information in November of the year, and then there are some external equipment pieces that will continue to come forward. So I wanted to set this discussion within the context of those four key areas of the TRV, so that you had that as a background. In the process procedure training component, the administrative team has been looking for a method to ensure there is a singular platform for emergency management, for visitor management, and for volunteer management. And the Raptor Technology Subscription Service allows us to accomplish that. Relative to emergency management, it allows for safety drills to be catalogued, safety drills to be aligned with our student information system, so that we can have attendance that's taken within the platform. It gives us a higher chance and opportunity for student and staff accountability in terms of who's where and when they are there. And then in the event of the need for reunification, if we needed to leave a campus and reunify elsewhere, the Raptor system provides us a very firm foundation for that. Additionally, the subscription service that we're looking to procure incorporates visitor management. Right now, in our schools, we utilize Identikit for visitor management. When a visitor checks in, they fill in information online, scan their ID, and get a visitor badge. That system that we're bringing on with Raptor would take over the visitor management system for us. And then the third component is a volunteer management scenario. That is the piece that will take us a little longer to build out. But it is a system that allows potentially for volunteers to apply for and be vetted through the Raptor system with parameters set up by the School Division as well.
From home.
Say again?
From home. They would access from home.
They could access it from home, but ultimately, it would be for us to be able to substantiate them when they are on campus for us as volunteers. The Department for Criminal Justice Services has recently endorsed the Standard Response Protocol, and the standard reunification method is a key piece for Virginia schools. I'm going to use these three letters, SRP, quite a bit, and I want you to know that it stands for Standard Response Protocol. It is a protocol that breaks down key safety and security events within a school into five key words. Raptor is completely aligned with the Standard Response Protocol. And in fact, the platform is built to allow for us to, as an organization, in moving towards the Standard Response Protocol, take advantage of some key critical communication pieces within their platform. We really feel like the move to Raptor is a great opportunity for us, safety and security-wise. And I'd be happy to answer questions and look forward to your support later this month.
Ms. Aller?
Does this integrate with, I mean, the attendance system? So that, because I see that the students, the late students would check in.
There are pieces, Ms. Hummel, that we would, we potentially could utilize. It does have a, an API scenario where you can communicate between the student information database and Raptor. We wouldn't necessarily, I don't think, use it for attendance, but we would be able to know if there were an issue in a classroom and we needed to evacuate a building. A teacher, if they had loaded it onto their phone, would be able to, instead of taking a piece of paper with them outside or to the location spot, be able to take attendance and verify students within the app itself. There are a number of capabilities within Raptor and the information that I provided to you that are possibilities. We're going to walk through it in a very specific process. Likely for us, it starts with visitor management, and then the next pieces will become emergency management and then volunteer management.
Okay. It would just, I would think it would be nice for us, at a, from a safety standpoint, to be able to, at any point in time, know, I've got 365 students in my building, and, you know, 25 of them came in late, but they're here.
We, we want to be careful that Raptor has not become the attendance record, but it does allow for us to gather information about who is where they are supposed to be or are not where they're supposed to be.
Thank you.
Dr. Beers, and then Ms. Ordigo.
I'm curious, is the Raptor program, the protocols for the Raptor program, are they, are they similar to the protocols we have right now? Are teachers, people going to have to relearn new protocols? Just tell me.
That's a great question. The, the protocols in Raptor are really driven by the organization that chooses to use them. So we can program in the way we wish for things to occur within the framework of the system. What I tried to signal a couple minutes ago is that we believe that Williamsburg James City County will be moving towards the Standard Response Protocol, which is a unifying language protocol around safety and security. It will require many of us to rethink what we call certain events that occur within school. The idea of a lockdown, a hard lockdown, a soft lockdown, all of these various, it starts to unify into a single word, so that when I say that word, you know what that means, and it doesn't matter whether you're at Clarebird Baker, Stonehouse, or Lafayette, we are all speaking the same language. So there will be some training components, both division-wide and then specifically within buildings.
The reason I ask that is I, you know, I hear from teachers who are, you know, pretty cognizant of the protocols, and they're always referring to the FBI and those three letters. I mean, I don't know if we, if we're tied into that, or that's just something they know?
I think there's an opportunity for us to refamiliarize ourselves with the expectations around safety and security. And each building has their own crisis management plan. But there is certainly a chance for us to enhance that. And we believe that this platform puts us in the right position to do that, along with moving towards the Standard Response Protocol.
Okay. Ms. Ordigo?
Is this strictly an internal communication tool? Because, I mean, does this, does this overlap anywhere with the mass notification system that we just discussed a minute ago?
There are lots of possibilities. Not, at this juncture, I don't think we intend for it to become a mass notification tool. It is for our staff and our administrators to be able to have a handle on specific instances of safety and security within the building. There, there are a number of connectivity possibilities through the Raptor Connect piece that allows us to potentially tie in with internal camera systems, internal microphone systems. If there is a computer system that can tie into the Raptor system, we have the ability to do that if we think that's the right move to make, but they are two separate and distinct functions.
And so we wouldn't use this to notify parents of an incident, for example?
I don't believe that is our intent. But what we want to talk with parents about is what the Standard Response Protocol looks like. And when we say that a building is on lockdown, what that means. Or when we say that a building is secure, we're in a secure setting, that's what that means. I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, I'm just curious if there's any redundancy, because we just talked about a mass notification system. And now, I understand this is much more than that, but is there also a mass notification component?
Not in the same manner that the mass notification. Not in the same manner that the mass notification system we are exploring through the RFP process.
Speaking of redundancies, maybe I'm hearing that as Raptor may be adopted by the board and rolled out through the division, that perhaps there's, it's going to be some time for our current volunteer management system to go on the shelf or our current visitor management system to go on the shelf.
Absolutely, visitor management. So we would, if we move forward with signing a contract for Raptor, it would be our intent to sunset our relationship with Identikit, which I believe has been bought out. And I do not know the name of the company that's bought them out. So we would no longer use Identikit and we would migrate to Raptor visitor management. Shouldn't necessarily change your interface as a visitor. You'll still report to the main office. You will still scan your ID and receive a badge to wear around the building. Your ID scanning process will be vetted against a sex offender registry list as it's currently doing right now. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Keever? All right, thank you, Mr. Keever. I look at now, a review of a lease agreement for a cellular tower with, is that Milestone? Not Milestone, Milestone Towers on the side of Lois Hornsby Middle School.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Keever's got this one too. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. We were approached by Milestone Towers about the possibility of constructing a cellular tower on the property at Lois Hornsby Middle School based on a need within that part of our community for additional telecommunications signals. We have looked at the idea very carefully. In your agenda packet, you will see a site plan with the most likely location for that cellular tower. It's tucked in the bottom part of the campus, down by some of the athletic fields near the storm retention pond. That tower initially, if everything goes according to plan with Milestone, would have one cellular carrier that takes advantage of it. We hope that additional cellular carriers would take advantage of it, because it would increase the amount of lease revenue that comes back to the school division. We do, just for knowledge sake, have currently a lease agreement with a different company for a cellular tower at Lafayette High School.
How much money can we make?
Well, depends on how many cell carriers join us or decide they want to lease part of that space. If everything's signed, sealed, and delivered in year one, approximately $13,000 in revenue from the cell tower in addition to a $20,000 one-time fee that is paid to the school division. And then in subsequent years, it'd be approximately $13,000 per carrier.
Per year?
Per year.
Okay, Ms. Ortega?
I, you know, I see it's placed pretty far away from the buildings. Is there any reason that anyone should be concerned for the health and wellness and safety of children being exposed to whatever?
We feel like its placement is terrific with respect to daily potential foot traffic. The company itself will do a community meeting as they go through the permitting process with the county in order to get it finalized in terms of permitting. And so if those folks that might have questions about safety in terms of proximity to cellular towers could ask that question, I don't believe it poses an imminent threat.
I mean, I assume there are standards for?
There are.
Distances from?
And setbacks and all of those kinds of things. So the plan that you see in front of you now is an initially blessed plan from the county with respect to a potential location for it. If the board signs a lease with the company through the superintendent's sign-off, then Milestone will work to get the actual specific permitting taken care of.
Is, I mean, there's clearly a lot of woods around that. Is that private land? I mean, is the, was the impetus to put it on school property in order to get some revenue? Or what was the impetus for not putting it?
On private property?
Private or is this county? I don't know what land I'm looking at here, but other than the school property. But I'm just curious.
They're looking for somebody to lease land to them, so.
They just approached you as a?
They approached us knowing that there were pieces of land there that were available and that it was an entity for them to sign a leasing agreement.
I think the size of the property allows it to be a very significant distance from the school, which I think is important.
Have we had issues at Lafayette with students milling around or trying to climb or anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Fencing going up?
There's a, there's a security fence with barbed wire that goes around each of the towers to include also a base, a small base building that's cordoned off based on the fencing.
I think that's important for parents, guardians to understand. Of students that would attend, you know, an elementary school or a middle school near that cell site. So, potential cell site. All right. Any others? Mr. Keever? Thank you, Mr. Keever.
Thank you.
Okay, item six six, review award for invitation for bid two zero two three one zero zero zero, Laurel Lane Elementary School Interior Refurbishment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're starting some of our CIP work that's about to happen this summer. And Mr. Snipes is going to introduce the next three items.
Thank you. Good evening, school board chair, school board members, and Dr. Heron. Tonight's school board agenda item supports goal four of the strategic plan and is brought for your consideration in review of the invitation for bid number two zero two three one zero zero zero, which is the Laurel Lane Elementary School Interior Refurbishment. This project was approved in the FY twenty-three CIP in a budget amount of $491,000. The work under this project includes removal and demolition of finished materials, which includes your VCT and carpet, painting of interior concrete mason and gypsum board assemblies, and painting of the hollow metal frames. An invitation for bid was issued on April the 11th, 2023, with the due date of May 2nd, 2023. And again, as a reminder, this was a placeholder agenda item. And at the time the item was prepared, the process had not been completed. The superintendent recommends that the school board review the project information and be prepared to vote at the May 16th, 2023 meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Snipes. On this first item of three, any questions for Mr. Snipes regarding Laurel Lane refurbishment? Okay, we'll move on to item six seven, the roof drainage and gutter repair at Laurel Lane.
Again, this is a placeholder agenda item, and it is a review of the award for invitation for bid number two zero two three zero nine nine five, which is the Laurel Lane Elementary Roof Drainage and Gutter Repair. This was also approved in the FY twenty-three CIP in the amount of $158,000 for the repair and replacement of the gutters and drainage. The work under this project consists of removing of the existing gutters and downspouts, removal and replacement of the gypsum sheeting and soffit material, and installation of downspouts and enclosures of the housing around the downspout, just to name a few. An invitation for bid was issued on April 14th, 2023, with the due date of April the 27th, 2023. The superintendent recommends that the school board review the project information and be prepared to vote at the May 16th, 2023 meeting.
Okay. Mr. Snipes? Take a pause for any concerns, questions? We'll move on to item six eight, Lafayette's High School's track. It's pretty in need of disrepair.
This is, this is a project I've been looking forward to since the pandemic, and I think we all have. It's, so tonight's proposed agenda item, placeholder agenda item, is the review and award of, and what we call a job order contract, with an annual contract with the county, which is number two one one four seven six zero, the resurface of the athletic track at Lafayette High School. Its support goes for of the strategic plan, which is safety and security. And this project was approved in the FY twenty-four CIP for an amount of $602,000. Work would not be completed or started on this project until approval of this year's budget, the budget. But it would include, and I'll list a few, removing of the embedded field event equipment and installing of new takeoff systems, installing, of course, asphalt and running track oval. An existing pole vault would be rubberized and surface removed and replaced. The underlying asphalt surface will be surfaced directly with a new surfacing. And we will install lines on running track areas. We'll also level the asphalt. And one of the most important things on a track is drainage, so we will start installing new drainage on the track as well. The superintendent recommends the school board review the project information and be prepared to vote at the May 16th, 2023 meeting.
Did you have a?
I'm excited, because I was walking on that track and a War Hill student was out there with a girl and said, this track is boo boo. So that's not very good. And it's like, okay. So I'm excited about that too, especially because neighborhood people, we can walk on it and it's rough.
All right, yes, it's definitely time. Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Dr. Heron?
One more?
One more.
I think he's got one more.
Yeah, yeah. Six nine, repair of the tennis courts at Lafayette High School. Sorry, I thought you had something on the track.
This is, this is also a project that we've been looking forward to for a while. The tracks were resurfaced in 2006, so it is time. This is also a review of the award of job order contract number two one one four seven six zero. And the project was approved in the FY twenty-four CIP in the amount of $610,000. And again, the project would not start until after the budget was approved and as of July 1st, 2023. The scope of the project includes, again, just to name a few, demolition and disposing of the existing concrete and vedette, regrade and form a new vedette, mill in place with soil cement, two batteries and three tennis courts, mill existing tennis courts, furnish and apply one coat of acrylic resurfacer, and check for low areas. The superintendent recommends the school board review the project information and be prepared to vote at the May 16th, 2023 meeting.
Did you say it hadn't been since 2006?
2006. Tracks and tennis courts are resurfaced as in our refurbishment cycle every 20 years, but.
Ms. Hummel?
When, for both the track and the tennis courts, when's the expected time for this? Over summer?
Over the summer, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So our track team and our tennis team can expect that when they come back to school?
That's the expectation. We will, we will get with the contractor, who's under, again, the annual contract, as soon as this is approved, to start the process of final completion and substantial completion.
Okay, great, thanks.
Did you say the lifespan is 20 years?
Yeah, yeah, we resurface tracks and tennis courts every 20 years.
That's a long time.
Yeah. And we, we've resurfaced the track at War Hill a couple of years ago, as well as Jamestown in 2016. So this is time. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Item six ten, review adoption recommendation and purchase request for AP Statistics textbooks and textbook materials. I want to say thank you to Ms. Donner for serving on this committee. Thank you for your commitment to that committee, committee's work.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, Ms. Monpoint is going to present this item. And welcome to your first board meeting, Ms. Monpoint, Director of Curriculum and Instruction for Secondary Schools. Thank you.
All right, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. Tonight I will provide you with an overview of the AP Statistics textbook and textbook materials, adoption process, and provide a recommendation from the adoption committees for the acquisition of instructional materials for advanced placement statistics. The adoption of instructional materials for AP Statistics aligns with Goal One and Goal Two of the Strategic Plan, Academic Achievement, College and Career Readiness, and Educational Equity. Having instructional materials that support 21st century learning and Virginia's profile of a graduate ensures that students and teachers have the appropriate resources aligned with the College Board standards and WJCC curriculum. It is also necessary to have high-quality instructional materials to support equitable access to instruction and resources that promote the success of all students. College Board provides a list of suggested textbooks for AP Statistics. The publishers of each of these books provided us with copies of their books and access to their digital platforms and electronic versions of their textbooks. Copies of the books were made available for the public to view at the school board office for four weeks and at an evening adoption fair at James Blair Middle School on March 30th. The community was also provided access to the digital platforms and electronic textbooks through the division website for four weeks. A committee representing a variety of stakeholders was created per school board policy to review the books and other materials provided by each publisher. We are appreciative of the work of our committee members and their colleagues. In addition, I'd like to thank Ms. Andrea Donner for serving on the committee as our school board representative. Committee members and the community were asked to evaluate the textbooks and instructional materials using eight criteria. Evaluation responses were collected using Microsoft Forms from March 24th through April 20th, 2023. Respondents were not required to evaluate a criteria if they did not feel qualified to do so. The committee met on April 20th to review the data and discuss their thoughts on the book. The data allowed the committee to compare all three books. The discussion then centered on the organization of the content, accessibility, and readability. The committee discussed the pros and cons of each book and based on this discussion made a final selection. The committee voted unanimously to select Stats: Modeling the World, Sixth Edition, AP Edition, copyright 2023 by Savas, previously known as Pearson. The committee offered these comments as their rationale for selecting this text. The text is user-friendly for students and teachers. The textbook and ebook are more accessible for all students. The readability of the textbook is appropriate for students. The content has strong alignment with the current AP Statistics curriculum. The digital textbook and resources have many features that support the specific needs of student groups such as multilingual learners and students with disabilities. It also provides easy-to-use online resources for our parents. Finally, I want to commend our secondary mathematics coordinator, Rebecca Cawthorn, on her leadership of this textbook adoption committee and for her commitment to ensuring a thorough, collaborative, and organized process. At this time, we'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Monpoint. Any questions for? Yes.
I don't have a question since I was on the committee, but I just wanted to commend you for the way that you ran it. It was very well organized. We had really great representation and I think really giving a voice to those teachers that were going to have to teach the materials. And so listening to parents, but really letting the teachers provide their insights and guidance. And so I think, given that I haven't taken stats in I won't say how many years, it was really, it was just a really well-run process. And I think we ended up with a good textbook that will allow the students to have something that's engaging and making statistics something that is relevant to real world and something that'll get them excited. So thank you for everything that you did.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, there's, I'm sure it does. I just want to hear you say it. In terms of resources, is there software available so that you can, you know, they can learn how to, how to use that software to do statistical analysis?
Yes, so the resource that we're purchasing also comes with an online textbook as well, online digital resources. And so we're purchasing, it'll be a total of 140 digital access licenses for our students. We wanted to model their college experience. And so we know that they need to be able to use their one-on-one device and use the online resources that come along with the textbook.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, well, thank you so much for your work and to everybody that served on the committee that was representing this report as well. Thank you. And take that back to your committee if you would. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to our final proposed agenda item for the evening, six eleven, a review of the WJCC Family Life Education Community Involvement Team's recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, Ms. Ford and Ms. Otstad, Mr. Otstad are here to present the Family Life Education Community Involvement Team's recommendations for next year. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Dr. Heron, and members of the school board. I have the honor and privilege to speak with you this evening as a representative of the WJCC Family Life Community Involvement Team. Tonight I would like to present five recommendations from the committee for your consideration. But first, I would like to provide just a little background about the team and our process. Need a little technical assistance. Thank you. In alignment with the Virginia Board of Education Guidelines for Family Life Education, the Community Involvement Team was formed in October, two thousand and twenty-two. Solicitation for community participation was sent through the Engage With Us portal. The selected team contained seventeen members consisting of two teachers, two school nurses, one school counselor, four school administrators, two members of the clergy, two community health services providers, and ten parents. Many of the members serve dual roles as parents and employees or community health providers. The community directly represents thirteen WJCC schools and contains K through twelve administrators that represent all WJCC schools. Between October, two thousand and twenty-two and March, two thousand and twenty-three, the team met seven times, including four whole-group meetings and three subgroup meetings. All meetings were held in a hybrid fashion, both in-person and over Zoom, to accommodate for a variety of professional and personal schedules. The goals of the WJCC Family Life Community Involvement Team are threefold. Number one, to identify the programmatic needs to further promote community awareness and involvement. Two, review the alignment of existing instructional resources to the two thousand and twenty VDOE Family Life Standards of Learning. And three, provide feedback for the communication plan for the family life curriculum and opt-out By March, two thousand and twenty-three, the team completed two hundred and fifty-two separate reviews of current instructional resources. The team reached an overwhelming consensus on all five recommendations, which are centered around transparency, parental choice, and staff training. Recommendation one, WJCC will provide structured in-person and virtual parent sessions throughout the year to address questions prior to opt-out decision-making. The voting record for the Community Involvement Team was sixteen in favor, zero opposed. The anticipated implementation date will be September, two thousand and twenty-three, and the rationale is that to be as transparent as possible and provide parents with multiple avenues to gain information on the WJCC Family Life curriculum, there will be several parent sessions scheduled where a WJCC staff member will be available to answer questions prior to any opt-out decision. Any meetings held virtually will be recorded and made available to parents through view. Recommendation two, parent guides will be posted on the WJCC website. The voting record was sixteen in favor, zero opposed. The anticipated implementation date was August, is August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. In accordance with Virginia Code twenty-two-point-one-dash-two-oh-seven-point-two, each school board shall develop and distribute to the parents of a student participating in the Family Life education program and post for public viewing on the local school division's website a summary designed to assist parents in understanding the program implemented in its school division as such program progresses and to encourage parental guidance and involvement in the instruction of students. The WJCC parent guides will provide a brief history of the Family Life program, a review of the opt-out procedures, basic information on implementation of the program, and a comprehensive breakdown of the Virginia state standards that are covered in each grade level. In this breakdown, the parent will be able to read a descriptive statement of the standard and be provided with an activity, discussion question or questions, and key terms which might supplement their support of this learning from home. Recommendation three, all Family Life instructional resources will be placed in an accessible OneDrive folder for community access from the WJCC website. Schools will continue to house a paper copy in each school building. The voting record was sixteen in favor, zero opposed. The anticipated implementation date will be August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is in alignment with Virginia Code twenty-two-point-one-dash-two-oh-seven-point-two. A complete copy of all printed materials not subject to copyright protection and a description of all audiovisual materials shall be made available through any available parental portal and kept in the school library or office and made available for review to any parent or guardian during the school office hours before or during the school year. Recommendation four, opt-out forms for Family Life Education will be reformatted. Updated forms will be digital, fillable forms where responses can be tracked and monitored. The voting record was sixteen in favor, zero opposed. The anticipated implementation date will be August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is also in alignment with Virginia Code twenty-two-point-one-dash-two-oh-seven-point-two. Parents and guardians have the right to excuse their child from all or part of Family Life education instruction. Currently, the WJCC Family Life opt-out form requires parents to write out which areas of the Family Life curriculum they want their child excused from. The updated form will break each grade-level Family Life unit down into the standards covered and then allow parents to excuse their child from all or portions of that unit in a more transparent way. The digital format will allow division record-keeping, which will inform future decision-making with regards to curriculum. The fifth recommendation is that all K-five classroom teachers, school counselors, and school nurses receive the VDOE Family Life Basics Training Module prior to teaching Family Life. Paraprofessionals will be included in taking the training if they are able. Administrators will complete the VDOE Family Life Administrator's Course once it is ready from the VDOE. The voting record on this recommendation was sixteen in favor, zero opposed. The anticipated implementation date will be June, two thousand and twenty-three for initial training for teachers, counselors, and nurses. Training for new staff, including secondary health and PE teachers, will be an onboarding requirement that will be ongoing. Currently, all WJCC health and PE teachers, K through twelve, have completed this training. They did so in August of two thousand and twenty-two. As listed under the first section of the Virginia Board of Education Guidelines for Family Life Education, those individuals selected by the localities to teach the Family Life education program shall participate in the training program sponsored by the Department of Education. This is a Canvas module through Virtual Virginia that they would take asynchronously. There was a sixth recommendation made by the team, but at this time, that recommendation will be going back to the team to explore in further detail how it will be implemented before it is presented in more detail to the board. As I close, I want to express deep thanks and admiration for the time and hard work of all of the members of the WJCC Family Life Community Involvement Team. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them at this time.
Sir, is it Otstad?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the board? Ms. Hummel?
When a parent opts out for their child, what kind of activities or whatever are offered up for the students?
So they're given an alternate health assignment, which is still correlated to the health SOLs, but it generally is more of like an enrichment activity that they complete during the Family Life unit.
Okay, and then SOLs, are there any parts of the SOL that they're missing because they're opting out?
They would only miss the Family Life Standards of Learning during that time. So, at the secondary level, we have a Family Life unit in each sixth, seventh, eighth, Health and PE one and Health and PE two. And currently, if a parent elects to opt their child out of the entire unit, then they would just complete, generally, it's like a two-week-long project, health project. There are cases where students will opt out, or parents will opt their student out of just one or two standards from that unit, and in that case, they would still be a part of that unit, just not for those particular standards. They would have a shorter assignment during that lesson or those lessons.
Would they still be taking the SOLs?
The Family Life SOLs? They would not complete those Family Life SOLs.
Okay.
They would be opted out. They would not receive that content.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ms. Donner?
I just wanted, for the fourth and fifth grader, actually more for the fifth-grade section, when there's kind of more discussion about bodies and how those are changing, how are students grouped? Are students all together, or is there any separation based on male and female?
So currently, the WJCC practice is to separate students by gender, and that's what we're doing this school year, and that's what we will continue doing for the time being.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
For which grades?
That's fourth and fifth grade. We also have one school in sixth grade that also separates by gender during the Family Life unit.
Just sort of ago, you had a question?
Do, but just on that, why only one school separates in sixth grade if we have?
It's been a school-based decision in the past, and so a lot of it is due to staffing. Some of it is just due to decision-making. We haven't, I guess, come out and said, in terms of that practice at the secondary level. Seventh through tenth grade is all gender combined across the board.
So, when a parent approaches a school year, I know sometimes the health classes are staggered throughout the school year, right? They kind of alternate with PE classes. Is there a recommended time that parents, you know, should they know going into a school year, this is the time to review the curriculum for the whole school year and decide at the beginning? Or how will they know at what time what's being discussed?
Sure. At the beginning of the year, the opt-out forms have been sent home to all parents. Teachers and school buildings have communicated when the Family Life unit comes up, and they do that more than thirty days prior to the Family Life unit starting. So, we send out the opt-out forms at the beginning of the year, and then thirty days prior to instruction, there's another notification to those families that Family Life is about to start, to give them time to review materials. With the new opt-out forms, they'll be on, basically on the website, and be able to be accessed there, so they'll have access to opt their student out. In addition, with the instructional materials, they will have the ability to go onto the website at their will at any point in time, wherever they are, and access instructional materials throughout the year.
So currently, we, when you say send it out, we email? We push out an opt-out form, but over email?
It goes home in the beginning of the year packet of materials.
With the child?
Yeah, it's sent home, just like all the other beginning-of-the-year forms are sent out currently. It is also linked on the WJCC website as well.
Okay. And then I just have one other question. And the OneDrive housing of the material, that satisfies the law, I mean, all the places that it needs to be housed, that OneDrive, does that satisfy, according to Virginia law, where everything needs to be stored?
So, the Virginia law says parent portal. For us, the one, having a link to a OneDrive folder that can be linked on the WJCC website will give parents full access to every material, whether it's written, audiovisual, PowerPoints, whatever it may be. In terms of instruction, our teachers use Canvas as their mode of instruction, and so it's very difficult to give parents access to Canvas modules. That's just kind of the way Canvas works, and so we have to put it in a slightly different format to allow parents, but it will be the exact same material, just, we'll use the material to create Canvas modules.
Okay, and any individual parent that was concerned, they weren't seeing everything, could contact the school or contact the principal and go and see whatever they needed to see?
Absolutely, yeah. So what we'll do is, we'll take all the materials that we house in the OneDrive folder, we'll print them out into printed binders, anything that can be printed out, we'll keep those in the school, and then any audiovisual materials, that if they want to go to the school and access those, we can, they can just pull those up from the website and show the parents at that point in time.
Is it fair to say that this, these recommendations and these changes that are being made are actually streamlining the process and making it more uniform across the division and making it easier for parents to access the material?
I certainly hope so, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I'm curious about the composition of the committee, and maybe some of these were, some of the parents were in this category. Did you have any physicians or psychologists on the committee?
There is a psychologist by training, yes, yes, sir.
And were any physicians on that committee?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Beers. Any other questions for Mr. Otstad? I just wanted to commend you and your committee participants. Six months, that's a heavy workload. I know it was seven meetings over six months, but then to find unanimous agreement over five recommendations, that's tough to do in any environment. Trust me, I know. And so, I just want to applaud you and your team for really doing the hard work, really considering something that's really important to families, parents, and even their students who want to be trained and educated in a certain way with a certain values in mind. So, thank you for including parents. I appreciate that the committee's work was very considerate of parents and their involvement in their kids' education. Thank you, Mr. Otstad.
Thank you.
We've got a real quick, not much of a discussion here on item seven-one, our school board standard operating procedure. This is on our agenda this evening, just as an FYI, that every year, our SOP requires us to review our SOP, and I think that had been done in April of last year, if I'm not mistaken, and so we're about on track, but we'll be moving into the May timeframe to have it reviewed and then readopted or revisions adopted for SOP. So, the ask is that our policy committee, not meeting again until, I think, the twenty-fourth of May, but add our SOP to that conversation on the twenty-fourth of May, and then bring forward some, any recommended revisions. I note that Ms. Aller has already been working on a red line document to keep, to have the policy committee consider changes related to certain policies that we've already addressed that then have implications in our SOP. So, for our members that are not a part of the policy committee, please do review our SOP and get any recommended revisions to our board members that are on the policy committee so that they can discuss those things in their May twenty-fourth meeting. Is that good for you, Ms. Hummel?
So, we are allowed to recommend things?
Yes, I would like us to do it that way. Yep, absolutely. Yeah. If they're good with that. Okay, yeah. And then we'll take this up for discussion and action in a June meeting. Okay, give us six months to live under a revised SOP. All right, move on to item seven-two, Strategic Plan Update. Dr. Here?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's our pleasure this evening to bring back to you more updates on strategic plan goals. If you recall, Ms. Bujowar presented a lot of Goal Four at our last meeting, and she's going to present the final strategy, Strategy Five and Goal Four first, and then that will be followed by Ms. Trot, who's going to present Goal Two. A lot of staff were involved in Goal Two across many areas, across the whole school division. You'll see some of them tonight, and others will be here to answer questions, should you need, should you have questions at the end of each one. Throughout the presentation, because of the amount of information, we will stop periodically and say, do you have any questions on certain pieces of the information? So, it's my pleasure to hand over to Ms. Bujowar. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. This evening's Strategic Plan Update continues our presentation for Goal Four, Safety and Security. Strategy Five focuses on barriers to student participation in the learning environment, particularly attendance and responses to behavior. Recognizing the importance of a school culture that is supportive for all students, targeted work is being done in these areas. This chart is provided to frame the importance of making attendance a priority for our students. This trend data compares absent rates for the first three marking periods of each year and shows a significant increase in the total number of days' absence for our students. In starting to address the growing number of absences, there was an identified need to review and revise attendance processes this year. Mr. Scott Casson, Supervisor for Student Interventions and Non-Traditional Programs, took on the leadership role of analyzing our current practices for attendance, identifying areas in need of revision, and developing systems to improve interventions, documentation, and communication. He will now share that work with you.
Good evening. As Ms. Bujowar shared, one of the areas that we identified as a point of focus for this school year was attendance. A review of our three-year attendance data conducted prior to the start of the school year showed that, frankly, we as a division were trending in the wrong direction. In our last full school year prior to COVID, our chronic absenteeism rate for the year was ten point nine percent, with half of our schools having single-digit chronic absenteeism. By the end of the twenty-one-twenty-two school year, the division was at fifteen point three percent, with only three schools still in the single-digit range. In the chart seen here, you can see that from two thousand and nineteen-twenty to twenty-one-twenty-two. In the chart seen here, you can see that from two thousand nineteen, twenty to twenty-one, twenty-two, there was a sizable spike in total absences, an increase of just over twelve thousand full-day absences in the first three marking periods alone. The bulk of these absences were coded as unverified. Tackling unverified absences to identify why students were missing school became one of our leading priorities for addressing chronic absenteeism. In order to address the growing number of unverified absences, we first needed to ensure that processes were consistent across the division. We began our work by meeting with select schools, uh, school attendance teams to learn more about what worked well and what could be an area of improvement. From these conversations, we were able to revise procedures for handling unverified absences, develop tracking tools such as a process flowchart, provide training and communication to school staff, and monitor for fidelity of implementation. This also included working with court services as well as social services and implementing consistent practices with the multidisciplinary team in intervention that is required by state code. As the volume of this work grew, additional resources were provided to the schools to assist with timely implementation. There are specific requirements embedded within Code of Virginia for addressing excessive unexcused absences. For instance, once a student has accumulated five unexcused absences, intervention procedures include the development of an attendance intervention plan. Parents and students are both asked to participate in this process. The team looks at what barriers to attendance might be present for a student and what expectation and supports can be put in place. If a student then reaches seven unexcused absences, the school team will hold an, an attendance intervention meeting with the family. Once a student has reached the tenth unexcused absent within the same school year, the school will submit a referral to the multidisciplinary team. This multidisciplinary team has representatives from multiple agencies who can offer different levels of intervention for both the student and the family. If the MDT referral does not improve attendance, a student will be petitioned to go before the judge. Compared to last year, our attendance intervention shows there have been two hundred and fifty-six more attendance intervention plans already completed for this school year. The number of intervention meetings held so far this year is nearly double all of last year. The MDT referrals and the court petition numbers have also grown significantly. This data represents a significant commitment to the work by our attendance clerks, administrators, student advancement coaches, and our graduation coaches. As the first marking period ended, data collected showed a disturbing trend. Despite the work to address unverified absences, the chronic absentee rate was on the rise. By definition, a student is considered chronically absent when the number of absences is ten or more, ten percent or more compared to the number of days of school. For reporting purposes, all absences, excused absences and unexcused count towards the determination of chronic. This does create a moving target, since ten percent at the end of the first marking period is only four and a half days, while ten percent for a full year would be eighteen days. A deeper review of the data and conversations with our school leaders revealed that the rising chronic absenteeism was being driven by two major areas, a robust cold and flu season, and an increase in the number of excused absences. With this information in hand, it became apparent that immediate action would be needed to reverse the emerging trend. To start, we increased communication to parents on the importance of daily attendance and the impacts of missing school. This was shared through division parent newsletters, school newsletters, and individual communications to parents. We also changed vacation days to be unexcused. Data from quarter one showed that nearly twenty-six percent of all excused absences were coded as vacation. This change is consistent with practices of surrounding divisions. Additionally, we enrolled in Engage Virginia, a VDOE initiative to support students with chronic attendance concerns. And finally, we formed an attendance committee consisting of diverse representation that included registrars, attendance clerks, school administrators, counselors, parents, student advancement coaches, and graduation coaches. The attendance committee reviewed all aspects of the attendance procedures currently in use and made recommendations for moving forward. Although we are currently on a slight uptick in our chronic absenteeism rate, thanks to the incredible efforts of the attendance teams at each of our schools, we have been able to reverse the spiking chronic absenteeism rate of the first quarter. This graph captures moment in time to show how the data has changed throughout the school year. The orange line on the chart represents the goal for state accreditation. Level one is fifteen percent or less. Also noteworthy is the division's average daily attendance rate. Prior to March first, the daily attendance rate had lagged behind the daily attendance rate of the previous three school years, dropping as low as eighty-eight percent the final week of November. Since March first, however, the daily attendance rate has climbed above that of the same point in the previous year, and we are currently hovering around ninety-four percent. While overall we are tracking in the right direction, we do recognize that the work is not done. The attendance committee has made several recommendations for moving, or implementation, beginning with the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. These recommendations include clearly defining types of absences which are excused versus unexcused, providing additional clarification to school attendance teams on timelines for contacting parents, scheduling meetings, and implementing attendance improvement plans, allowing up to ten absences per year to be excused with note from Parent Guardian without requiring additional documentation, and aligning course credit at the high school level and grade-level promotion at the elementary, middle schools to, to school attendance. These recommendations are currently in the review process. I would now like to turn the presentation back to Ms. Bujhwa.
Thank you, Mr. Kassen. As you can see, the attendance rates for our students has been a daily focused priority for the division. Ongoing work includes bringing policy revisions for board consideration in June, finalizing the regulations, training for all relevant stakeholders in the implementation of those new regulations for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year, and ongoing communication with families to continue to make attendance a priority. We will pause here for a moment for any attendance questions you may have.
Ms. Aller?
Um, do you see a, a different kind of a breakdown by grade level? By, you know, elementary, high school? Like, is it pretty consistent? Or do you see more absences in the elementary?
Is that the high school level? Um, I would say probably sixty to seventy percent of our chronic absenteeism is at the ninth through twelfth, or, sorry, is ninth and tenth graders.
Ninth and tenth?
Once they're in eleventh and twelfth grade, it starts to come back down again. But the end of eighth grade, ninth and tenth graders is where the most of them are.
And then, um, if, if we can't get below the fifteen percent, are we in danger of losing our accreditation for every school that is below fifteen percent?
So, if we're between fifteen and twenty-five percent, it's considered level two. So, it's, it's a monitoring. We are, you have to be above twenty-five percent to, to be in what's called the red zone, level three.
Okay, thank you.
So, is that that accredited with conditions? Is that level two?
The yellow, it's a warning.
It's a warning, okay.
Correct, Mr. Walker, it's a warning.
And we're absolutely not alone in this. Um, every single school division has had the same change in culture and fighting against attendance issues and really trying to bring kids back to school. So, we're not alone in this. Um, I think there's some concern even at the state level. Uh, the Board of Education discussed even not having chronic absenteeism count for this year, and they decided to keep it in. Uh, they just decided that last week after much debate. Um, I believe we will be okay.
Ms. Ordigo and then Dr. Beers?
Uh, actually, I peeked ahead and I'm going to answer the question. I was going to ask.
Ms. Ordigo.
So, I won't ask.
Um, so I understand the accreditation piece. What is the, what is the impact that chronic absenteeism is having on students? Are we expecting our graduation rates to go down? Are we seeing, um, grades going down, are kids not passing classes? Um, so I, I, our culture has changed so much in the last couple of years, especially, you know, a whole workforce culture of, well, you can kind of work from anywhere. And, you know, our kids can kind of do schoolwork from anywhere. And so, um, is it, is it that kids are still getting work done, but they can just do it from their bedroom instead of coming to school? Or, or are we seeing a downturn in, in how this is impacting kids?
I think it varies from student to student. Um, we do have some students, some of our older students are able to complete some of their work through the Canvas program. It makes it very difficult when they're doing things like labs or project-based learning assignments in class. So, there's a disconnect there. And it, it makes it hard for teachers to be able to make up some of that, those opportunities. Um, for our younger students, it's much more difficult because so much of it is hands-on and station-centered.
Right, so are we expecting graduation rates to go down then?
Uh, we haven't really aligned that, I haven't looked at that.
I think every opportunity will be provided to students to make sure they've been able to do all of their work, to be successful. Um, but you'll notice one of the recommendations for next year, as many other divisions have done, is actually to align attendance with success in a class, similar to what happens in a college class.
So, like a participation, participation grade that accompanies the work grade?
Not quite that, but I think we're, the committee's working through what that might look like. Is that a fair statement, Mr. Kassen?
Yes.
So, we're looking at every possible avenue because students need to be in school.
Perhaps, I mean, just the thought, you know, are we considering allowing the access to everything from, for every class to maybe only be accessed upon approval? You know, if a parent says, hey, my, my son has the flu, okay, the teacher says he could do this from home versus kid just doesn't show up, no one knows where he is, can't do it from home?
I think we're looking at every avenue. We're, we're working with school leadership to consider all of those aspects. So, that's why that's still in the review and finalization process.
Dr. Wardy, do you want to make any comments on that?
I think the ultimate goal that any teacher or administrator says, we want our kids in school. So, as Ms. Bujhwa said, we haven't worked through all the details, but we also know that there are exceptions and situations. So, we want to provide support in any way that we can. Um, and we're, we're going to really work to that primary place, being in-person in school for, for learning as much as possible.
And if you remember from the data, chronic absenteeism is all absences. It's parents excusing absences, it was vacation, it was everything. And so, starting to, to change how we view things and our perception of things becomes very, very important moving forward. And, and I do believe we're beginning, what we've done already is beginning to impact the data this year. If we hadn't started working with attendance meetings in every school and changing some of our policies mid-year, we probably wouldn't be at the data point we're at now.
All right, let's continue with four-five.
We will now shift to the division's work in responding to student behavior. As you may recall, the Virginia Department of Education revised the reporting categories beginning last year. Mrs. Tracy Harris-Mason, our coordinator for student services, who works directly with schools on our responses to behavior, will provide a number of data points that drive our work in this area.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, school board members, and Dr. Heron. The twenty-one, twenty-two school year was the first year of full implementation of the student behavior and administrative response categories for tracking student behavior. These behavior categories and the behavior types under each category have been developed by the Virginia Department of Education and prioritize responding to student behavior at an appropriate level of intervention rather than simply giving a disciplinary consequence. There are six established categories, and the categories range from less serious to most serious. In this representation here, all of the categories, you will see that behaviors related to school operations is our leading misbehavior category, followed closely by behaviors that present a safety concern. In these categories, students that demonstrate these behaviors tend to lack understanding and training in social awareness and decision-making skills.
Can I make sure everybody understands?
Dr. Beers?
School, I'm sorry. Um, could you briefly define school operations?
Um, when we do school, related to school operations, these behavior interfere with the daily school procedures such as dismissal, um, if the kids were going to lunch, um, just different things that would be, any, any type of way we would operate the school.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, recognizing that last year was the baseline year for using Sbar, we do want to provide some comparative data for the first semester of each year. Within the five Sbar categories, there are over seventy-five behavior types. Data for both years shows student behaviors do go across a wide range of the behavior types. It also clearly shows first semester behaviors for this year show a marked increase as compared to last year. While we have begun the implementation and training with Sbar, there is an added priority for next year to ensure the accuracy of documentation as it is connected to understanding Sbar more thoroughly. This will include ongoing training with administrators, trainings with teachers and staff, as well as updates to the code of conduct to make sure, to make for better understanding for parents and other community stakeholders. Breaking that data down even further, five behaviors represented over forty percent of the incidents for each year. The top five are provided here. While the wording for the top behavior for each year is slightly different, this does represent the same behavior. VDOE continues to adjust behavior descriptions as Sbar implementation continues. Drilling the numbers down even further, the two thousand five hundred and four documented behaviors so far this year are attached to one thousand one hundred and fifteen unique students, which represents nine point nine percent of the enrollment. That means that over ninety percent of our students have no behavior incidents, and that is something we definitely want to celebrate. The majority of these students, eight hundred and ninety-nine, have three or less documented incidents. A priority area of focus for schools and the division are those two hundred and sixteen students who have four or more documented behaviors. This small percentage of students garners a majority of our administrators' time. Comparing this year's data to last year's data, there is an increase in the number of students with four or more incidents. Transition years, particularly K through one and grades nine through ten, show a significantly higher frequency in the number of students with four or more behavior incidents. Comparison data for this year and last year regarding students with a disability shows a consistent disproportionality. This is an acknowledged area of focus for the division and our school leadership teams. Students with disabilities are granted the same due process rights as their non-disabled peers, while also receiving additional safeguards under the Individualized Disabilities Education Act and Section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three. If a student's behavior hinders their own learning or that of others, the IEP team must explore the use of positive behavior interventions, strategies, and supports to address these needs, such as creating IEP goals and services, conducting a functional behavioral assessment, and developing a behavioral intervention plan as necessary. To ensure that schools take proactive steps to address behavioral issues that could result in disciplinary action, the Department of Special Education works with IEP teams to develop a shared understanding of the appropriate level of services and supports that are necessary for students to receive a free, appropriate public education and determine their least restrictive environment, both of which require parental consent. Through this process, along with the direct support of each school, the Department of Special Education identifies targeted supports for programming that serves the individualized needs of these students. The last comparison is data by race and ethnicity, which shows our black students have a disproportionate number of behavior incidents as compared to other races and ethnicities, and that this has been consistent over the years. Approaching school discipline from an instructional prevention-based standpoint contributes to a positive school environment and ensures equity, fairness, and continuous school improvement as we stick, as shown through our model guidance, which is provided by the Virginia Department of Education in two thousand twenty-one. WJCC acknowledges that similar to the state and nation, disproportionate behavior referrals for students with a disability and black students must be explicitly addressed through training and implementation that creates a responsive environment which respects and supports all learners. Current steps to address the disproportionality include working with school leaders to emphasize inclusivity and respect by ensuring the culture and climate of the school is creating an environment that is reflective of a diverse student population and their unique backgrounds and experiences. It is important to also look at how we as a division are responding to student behaviors. Data for the first semester of this year clearly shows that our schools- that our schools are focused on helping students acknowledge misbehavior and, most importantly, have opportunities to learn and grow. Level-one responses and interventions are intended to prevent further behavior issues while keeping the student in school. Level-two responses and interventions at this level are designed to prevent further behavior issues and keep the student in school. Depending on the severity of the behavior, short-term removal of the student from the classroom may be appropriate. Level-three responses and interventions may result in the student's short-term removal from school. Over seventy percent of the responses to behavior have been at level one or level two. Examples of these types of responses include student conferences, reteaching, reflection, restitution, loss of privileges, and ISS. Our school administrators address each behavior incident through a lens of how to best improve the student to learn from the incident and gain skills for future situations. The design of this is to address student behavior, reinforce school and classroom expectations for appropriate behavior, and prevent further behavior issues. With this new implementation of S-Bar, last year, we ended the year with only twenty-five percent of our documented incidents, including behavioral supports. At the semester of this year, eighty-nine percent of our total incidents included a behavioral support, and those suspended outs, outside of school also had instructional access. We understand that as we continue to work on our tools for measurement and enhancement of interventions and supports, this will allow our administrators to make data-driven decisions that are appropriate for all students, behavior levels at all levels.
Our school staff is faced with a growing number of behaviors which require response, and our division has a number of resources and supports available to support this work. The one to two hundred and fifty ratio for counselors to students allows counselors opportunities to work with students individually and in groups to identify and practice appropriate social responses. Therapeutic day treatment is available in all schools through an MOU with the National Counseling Group. Buildings are staffed based on caseloads, which varies from school to school. These counselors provide intensive individualized support for identified students. They work closely with school staff to appropriately respond to student behavior. School psychologists and school social workers work hand-in-hand with administrators, counselors, and teachers to identify specific student needs and support individual and small group opportunities. Special education instructional specialists provide resources and training and assist with behavioral observations, data collection, modeling of strategies, and parent communication. Beginning last year, three behavior intervention specialist positions began working with our schools. They provide direct in-class supports for teachers on how to respond to specific student behaviors. The specialists take an active role in data collection, student observation, and the completion of functional behavioral assessments and behavior improvement plans. A snapshot of their work so far this year includes five hundred and ninety-two individual student interventions, two hundred and eighty-five sessions implementing classroom strategies and supports, thirty-five formal referrals, and two hundred and eighteen, two hundred and eight consultations outside of formal referrals. In addition, school-based trainings this year have included de-escalation strategies and understanding the function or the why of behavior. Training efforts for crisis intervention have resulted in two hundred and sixty-five staff members certified in nonviolent crisis intervention. We also constantly monitor and adjust available support staff as needed. This might mean a behavior specialist is at one of their five schools a number of days in a row to provide specific targeted supports for a student or classroom in need. It might also be procuring funding for additional adult support in a classroom on a temporary basis or scheduled changes for itinerant staff to provide needed support. In addition to our resource staff supports, there are targeted opportunities to analyze behavior data at the school level. As you will hear in the upcoming Goal Two presentation, our MTSS work continues to provide the framework for addressing student needs behaviorally, emotionally, and academically. In addition, Ms. Harris-Mason, who joined WJCC schools in August, is utilizing her expertise with S-Bar. She actually helped the state develop this information and on documenting and analyzing behaviors. She has provided training to our school leaders to increase understanding with the S-Bar process. She is in schools daily, interacting with students, administrators, and teachers to create relationships that support the restorative process. She also goes with Mr. Nick Keer, our coordinator for Student Services, to hold quarterly meetings with our middle school and high school leadership teams to look at behavior trends, analyze responses, and determine action steps. This data-driven problem-solving process is used to identify repeated offenses and offenders, as well as disproportionality in referrals. Specific action steps focused on individual student needs are developed based on this data analysis. As this continues into next year, work will include prioritized meetings with school leaders to look at individual data trends showing disproportionality with subsequent action planning to address that specific data. This work will be done through a restorative lens. Who was harmed? How do we repair the harm? And it could also include teacher response and referrals, administrative response to those referrals, and opportunities for teaching appropriate responses for repeated student behaviors. Additional action steps in this work include providing professional development opportunities on effective instructional practices, restorative approaches, and de-escalation, providing our nonviolent crisis intervention training and certification to new special education teachers prior to the start of the next school year, collaborating with bright beginnings around the transition of students to kindergarten, working with curriculum instruction on vaping modules for use at the middle schools and high schools. The data shows there's much work to be done. It begins by focusing on what our priorities for students are: to minimize the impact of behavior response on students' opportunity to learn, to empower students to reflect and grow following a behavior incident, to reduce recidivism and disproportionality, and to repair relationships so that students, families, and our staff are able to work together for positive outcomes. Finally, looking towards the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year, WJCC plans to expand our current non-traditional learning opportunities to provide specific programming for suspended students and students with multiple behavioral referrals. Mr. Casson will now show the, share the framework for the planned restorative center.
Thank you. Planning for expansion of the non-traditional program offerings has been a multi-year effort. This has consisted of a review of school disciplinary data to identify areas of need, meetings with school-based administrators and personnel to identify program preferences, a review of the literature to identify ongoing trends in non-traditional programming, and a look at different models across the state and beyond. The proposed expansion incorporates many of the aspects observed and personalizes the program to address the identified focus areas. This program, which is slated to open with the two thousand three, two thousand four school year, has been named the Restorative Center. This naming is purposeful in that it conveys a positive tone. Students assigned to programs at the Restorative Center do so with the intent of meaningful reflection and purposeful planning to be successful in the comprehensive setting. All staff at the Restorative Center will receive training to support this mission. The Restorative Center will have two distinct, two distinct programs to support students. The first of the two programs will be known as the Reset Program. In both the two thousand eighteen, nineteen, as well as the two thousand one, two thousand two school years, there were over two thousand two hundred school days lost to out-of-school suspension for students in grades six through twelve. In addition to impacting daily attendance and chronic absenteeism rates, the literature regarding suspensions, even short-term suspensions, shows that students who are suspended are more, are more prone to be suspended again, suffer from social isolation, harbor feelings of distrust, and demonstrate lower levels of achievement on standardized testing. While out-of-school suspension is an appropriate response to certain behaviors, we also want to make sure that we, as a division, are supporting those students who are suspended by giving them the opportunity to reflect on the behavior, repair relationships, and receive instructional support during their period of suspension. Providing this support before the student returns to their own school will help the student to transition back more successfully. Looking at current data, an additional benefit to this program will be that it allows us to serve students who are disproportionately represented in the discipline data and with the intent of reducing recidivism. One school division that has opened a very similar type of center this school year has shared with us that their number of students with repeat suspensions has dropped noticeably since the program opened in February. The Restorative Center will also feature the Refocus Program. The Refocus Program is intended as a tier-three intervention for students who are in grades six through twelve that consistently demonstrate behaviors that impact their success in the traditional classroom setting. Placement in this program will be based on a rubric and require that both tier-one and tier-two interventions first be attempted in the comprehensive setting. Students assigned to the Refocus Program would be required to attend for a period of six weeks, with the option to extend placement to nine weeks. While in the Refocus Program, students remain attached to their classes at their own school and complete coursework through Canvas. Core teachers will be available to assist students with both content and technical needs. Much like the Reset Program, students assigned to the Refocus Program will participate in daily reflection and restorative practices at the small-group level. However, students in Refocus Program will also have the benefit of daily individual support from the student support specialist and school counselor to address the behaviors that led to the student being placed in the program. This will be followed by an intentional transition back to the comprehensive setting to assist a student with using the skills that they learned in the Refocus Program. I'd now like to return to Ms. Boujou.
This does conclude our presentation for this evening. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
So this is our first of two Goal conversations this evening. Any questions for Ms. Boujou, or Mr. Kason, or Ms. Mason, while we have them? Ms. Donner, and then Ms. Huntley?
Ms. Huntley was first.
I have a question, just coming from the elementary setting. Usually when we had students that were having difficulties or had to be suspended, administration and possibly the teacher and the students sat down and talked, and then they were suspended or whatever happened. Does that happen in middle and high school? Or is it parents just get a letter saying, this is infraction, whatever? Is there ever a meeting where admin and parents and students sit down and talk about what's going on?
So when a student is suspended from school, it should be two, it should be two parts. The first should be the initial conversation with the parent about what actually happened, what the consequences are, and then as the student is out of school, they should let the parent know there should be a re-entry meeting when the student comes back. Within that re-entry meeting, we try to emphasize with our schools that they have a school counselor. If there's TDT available or any other additional supports that the school could possibly put into play when the student returns, we ask that schools work collectively to have that plan in place once the student re-enters.
Does the plan include consequences with, in the home? Like, is there three, like, these are the rewards for whatever, where the home is involved in helping?
So I, I would say yes, if there is a, if there's a issue with the school contacting the parent. So mom, if you, you know, if you come back and you are able to, you know, work with us, or maybe you can show up for lunch one day or kind of help us out with that whole transition process, we ask that parents definitely put that as a part, I mean, schools actually put that as a part of the intervention plan. And I would say it would be a reward because then the student will possibly not be suspended anymore, and that will be helping with their behavior.
Ms. Donner?
Thank you, I'm, I appreciate all the work that has gone into this and the statistics. As I look, I'm very, very concerned, particularly as, as was acknowledged with the difference between black students and white students in particular, as well as our special ed students. My question is, as you look at the data and you cut it further, I'm sure as educators you're aware of the two thousand fourteen study that talks about how black children, particularly black boys from the ages of five up to age ten, they lose their innocence or are not seen as children. And then the two thousand seventeen study out of Georgetown that also shows black girls from the ages of five to fourteen also lose that innocence. And so in those studies, one of the things that they talk about is that there is a difference in the way that infractions are calculated or looked at, and that, that the studies show that there is no difference between the misbehavior between black and white girls in this particular two thousand seventeen study. But the amount of times that a black student is written up for those things versus a white child, there's a large disparity. And so I'm curious, as you have cut the data particularly around some of the school operations, and there was another category, have you cut that data to also look at by race and gender? Who is getting written up for specific types of infractions? So is it that, is it that they're not in the line to go to lunch? And so you're seeing more black students written up for that than white students? Or cellphone or whatever it is? And so I know you don't have the data probably in front of you, but that is what I would like to understand, is where do those differences start to happen? Because at least in the studies, it shows that for minor violations, black girls are two times more likely to be written up, and black boys one point three times more likely. For disobedience, black girls are get, are written up two point five times more likely than a white girl, and a black boy is one point five times more likely. Disruptive behavior, black girls are written up three times more likely than white girls, and black boys one point six. And for bullying, harassment, black girls are written up three times more than white students than white girls are, and black boys one point five. And so at least the data that you showed, and you look at national data as you mentioned, it is all sort of correlating that we are, we are, as a division, exhibiting the same types of discrimination, adultification bias that is seen. And I would like to understand more in the, the data of how that's really, you know, starting to play out. And then I think Mr. Keer will tell us a little bit more about how MTSS will help us maybe start to address some of those things, but I'm just curious to learn more about that.
So what I would say is the creation of S-Bar was made to address that. So previously, there was the disciplinary crime and violence. And so that category or that, that data set left so many loopholes. It left so many, you know, everything was subjective. And so when you have S-Bar, it allows you to really pinpoint the behavior. So with WJCC, this being the second year of implementation, and my coming here, now I've explained exactly what the data set is and how it should be used to make informed decisions. And so now when we go out and we talk to schools, we can definitely do that deep dive. We can do, the data allows you to pin it down to location, it pins it down to teacher, and then it pulls out that, those racial concerns as well as the, our students with disabilities. So the S-Bar in itself, it's, that's the whole premises behind it. That's what it was for, that's what it was designed for, so that we can definitely look at the actual behavior and how we're responding. And if we are, as a division, if we are responding to it appropriately, and if we are providing our students, our black students, our students with disabilities, are we providing them with the supports that they need? And previously, the data set didn't tell us that. It just said, you know, you were insubordinate, you were defiant, and you're like, okay, so what, what does that mean? And to me or you, it could mean a ton of different things. So with the S-Bar, it actually pins point, pinpoints the behavior and allows us to add in those supports. Thank you.
Thank you for that question. Dr. Beers, and then back to Ms. Wardigo.
Yeah, oh, okay, sorry. Yeah, a couple of things. I'm, I'm curious, did you ever, when you were looking over the behaviors and, and the students themselves, did you ever parse out students based on free and reduced lunch? If you know anything about Ruby Payne's research, very much of a focus on poverty and, and the impact that has on the behaviors that students exhibit, and it has nothing to do with race. It's poverty. And, and to get back to what Ms. Donner was talking about, I think that's an important area to pull out and, and because we do have, we have a, a number of students that fit into that category. The other point, I, the other, it's a question, but it's also a point, I think. One of the things that, I don't know, that some, it's, it, that isn't a lot of research, but one of the things that has come up or come out, it's just been sort of forgotten about, is the value of student involvement in the creation of rules, of appropriate kinds of behavior, and so that they actually feel empowered because they, they feel that they're part of the system that's creating the kinds of rules and appropriate conduct. And it's almost like, you know, and part of it is, you know, if you do those things, Um, and it's almost like, you know, and part of it is, you know, if you do those things, I will try not to do these things. Uh, I, it's, uh, especially the secondary, you know, the high school kids, they've been around the block. There, there probably aren't too many different kinds of intervention things that they're not aware of. But they're coming down on them rather than having them become part of the, part of the system. That's all. That's really all.
I was gonna say that, so that's the power in restorative conversations. And so when we talk about those reentry meetings that students should have with principals when they come, when they come back into the school, it allows the student to have a voice and it allows them to be a part of their own intervention. So if it's a situation where we talk about free and reduce, you know, they can clearly say, I didn't eat, you know, there was no food. And so then the school has an opportunity to respond to that.
Right.
And so that's why I really-
And I think the other thing, they're proud. They're not gonna say, I'm poor or it, well, the reason I, I didn't get enough lunch or, you know, whatever. They're not gonna do that. They're not gonna do that.
The, the other piece of that too is, is, is the proactive piece before there even is a, a behavior. And at our high schools with their MTSS teams, they really do seek out student input, input and student voice in the development of the matrices. So, so right.
That have been suspended. I'm talk, I'm talking about-
So for instance, War Hill this year redid their, their MTSS matrix, which is where they kind of identify for their students what, what expectations look like in, in the classroom and in the hallway and even with digital learning now. And, and they got input onto what that should look like. Um, Jamestown did revise theirs last year and red- revised what the meaning of flight was. Um, you know, they, Jamestown has a team that meets with the principal and reviews their, their discipline data. And that, that is a cross section of students that represent the school population. There are students on that team that have had multiple referrals. So they really are trying to look at ways to bring in their voice.
Especially with the older students, you know, um, a, um, a lot of them think we're blowing smoke. And it's really, it, and it, and you know, it's more than just, we're here to help. And it's like, you know, the students there to help too, help you understand, have us understand where they are, where they're coming from, what issues they have. And, and often it'll be things like, what triggered this? Well, you know, I, I, there are a number of teachers or they, you know, whatever it might be. We need to, you know, it, it's like, um, um, I'm, I'm not legitimizing their behavior. That's not, I'm not talking about that. It's, it's, um, what is it, you know, in this setting that, that causes this?
Having a frank conversation, having a dialogue, right?
We wanna know.
That's well said, Dr. Beers. Ms. Ordigo?
Yeah, thanks. I just wondered if there was a, a way to, like a cross section. We have the slide that shows students with disability and disproportionality there. And then we have the slide, students by race and the disproportionality there. And is, do we know, um, say how many of the severe, you know, behaviors by either race, black or white, are also students with disability? You know what I'm saying? How many of the black ones are, also have disabilities?
We can pull that, yes.
I would just be curious for my, for my own edification. Are there, because, you know, along the lines of what Mrs. Donna was asking was, you know, maybe there are some students who have disabilities, but it's maybe not seen as a disability or it's just not, it's just seen as behavior versus, I, I don't know, just be curious.
Ms. Hundley, thank you, Ms. Ordigo.
And I'm also curious to pull, if we have three high schools, what are the percentages? And what is one high school, Jamestown doing so well? I'm sure they share, but something has to be working that can help out. Like, I'd like to know also the high school, even middle schools, what does it look like?
I think all of our high schools share a lot of information and the principals in particular collaborate extremely well and share good ideas. So thank you for that.
Ms. Hummel?
Um, thank you. Thanks for all the work that everybody is doing. Um, it's just, I mean, when you lay it all out, it's amazing, all of the kind of support acronyms that we all are learning and just the hard work that goes into this. When I look at the stats and I'm looking at the, you know, 90% of our kids are, are not having any kind of student behavior issues, I'm, I'm kind of in it for them because when I go around to the schools and we have our visits and the principals are telling us, you know, it's 10% of the kids that are creating 90% of the problems, but those 10% of the kids are really disrupting things, really disrupting. And so for me, I'm concerned with the, the learning experience for the 90% of the kids that are, are not having any behavioral issues, but are being negatively affected by the behavior. Whether some kids throwing a chair at them or watching a kid hit or bite their teacher. You know, those kind of, um, really negative experiences that our kindergartners and our first graders are experiencing when there's one or two kids that are really acting out in a class. So when, and if it's true that there's a higher correlation of the behavior that's based on being, um, maybe special ed, emotionally disturbed, and you're having to build out the IEPs and the interventions, is there a timing involved? So that the kids, because I know it's hard for these kids and it's hard for the parents when they're like, well, so and so bit my kid or so and so acted like this, when, when can they, their kid feel safe again? And so is there a timing when you have IEPs and interventions? Or is it something that just kind of works itself out over a long period of time during the semester?
Ask Ms. Bujhwa to take that one.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a process, basically. And that was exactly, it's, it's a process and, and it can look different for each individual student. So there's not a specific timeline that I can identify for you. Um, there are, you know, steps that we take. We, we talked in the presentation about the functional behavior assessments and the behavior improvement plans. I mean, we do those for students with a disability and for our general education students. It's, it's, it's trying to really start by looking at the function of the behavior, the, the why behind it. No, no student misbehaves just to misbehave. There's a reason to it. And so, you know, is it that, um, you know, that, that, that's a communication tool for them? Is it that the environment might be overwhelming and we need to change, adjust something in the environment? Is it that there is, has been a, a lack of opportunity for developing social skills and we need to use social stories to develop those with students? It really is an individualized student by student situation. Um, and, and a critical piece of that is, is the, the, the team there at the school, the support teams we have that, that provide those additional resources and that partnership with the parents to really be working through to identify the most appropriate, um, actions to take for students to be able, what to put into those plans and, and identifying, you know, are, do we have the right environment? Are there adjustments we need to make to that? So there's just a lot of considerations and it can, it can vary.
I, I can see the big challenge there. My other question has to do with the, um, the restore and the reset. So there's two classes in the high school and two classes in the middle school? Or do you have some reset kids with the restore kids?
It'll be two-
Combined.
Reset, refocus.
Reset, refocus, sorry.
So we're looking at four classrooms. We'll have a middle school reset, a middle school refocus, a high school reset and a high school refocus. Um, that way, if we need to move staffing around, because we have a lot of high schoolers and not as many middle school, we can kind of be flexible with staffing, but there will be four separate classrooms that we, we hold those programs in.
And have you identified what schools?
That's for our location?
Basically, the location initially will be the 900 building where, um, we have empty rooms around with CDR moving out. Those are going to be translated into rooms for this program to get it started next year. Uh, when that's being renovated completely, the 900 building, then we're going to have to find alternative space the year after and then potentially move back in again. Um, when the school expands to fill that space, then we'll have to look for additional space.
Um, so I have been on the school board for eight years now and, I mean, we had something similar to that at Lafayette High School. And I just want us to be very careful not to, um, create some of the issues that came before. Uh, things like attendance was being tracked to Lafayette High School, behavioral incidents were being tracked to Lafayette High School. There were some really negative things that were being tracked to Lafayette High School because they had the center there. And I just want to really make sure that when we're developing this again, that we're taking a very, very close look at protecting the, um, data from that, from reset. So that it doesn't bleed over into the, with attendance zones and everything else. That's-
Absolutely. If I could have Ms. Bujhwa just speak to that because the lab currently exists and serves a, a certain group of students and this will be in addition to that, obviously.
And so we have learned a lot with the learning lab and, and those students are concurrently enrolled. They're concurrently enrolled in the learning lab program to access that, but they're also still assigned to their home school. So this would look just like that. So any of that data point would go back to their home school.
Okay, including transportation is separate.
Transportation, how they get there.
So transportation were, yes, from, from Lafayette students, yes. So we're working with transportation. Um, what we're looking at right now is, is basically, uh, what we're calling a hub plan because transportation is such a challenge. So students would still ride their, their zone transportation to their zone school. That's their hub stop and they'll be transported from that school to the program and then vice versa at the end of the day. So Lafayette students would ride their own transportation and just walk over to the program. So we don't have all that finalized yet, obviously. Transportation's working very closely with us. Uh, the time schedule will be reliant on what that looks like. So, so we're still working out what those specifics will look like.
And then the middle school?
As far as transportation or?
Location?
Same place. We're gonna have them in the same building. We have four classrooms in the 900.
So it's all gonna be at the 900 building?
Yes ma'am, right next to the-
In the rooms vacated by CDR because they happen to be vacant right now and are unused and they're, they're, they're in a, they're, they're usable right now with very little works to get it up and running for next year. Because we don't want to delay any further in having a program where we really can focus on supports and restoration and reteaching behaviors and getting all students back into the regular environment as soon as possible. Um, I think as we come out of tonight, and I know it's been a very robust conversation around this uh, because we needed to have it as an organization. So I want to thank Ms. Bujhwa, Mr. Kason, Ms. Harris-Mason, Mr. Keer, who are all with us this evening for, there's been an incredible amount of work done across our division, every school, every principal, counselors, behavior specialists, everybody has been involved and intervening. But we have 90% of students who have not had a single, uh, incident against them. But our whole focus is making sure every kid's successful and, and trying to, to cut across that disproportionality that we've been living under for a period of time. And Sbar obviously is a huge piece of that. And having an expert here who really knows how to, to drive it from a student perspective is very important as well. And I, I genuinely believe we have the team to make a difference. And I hope you've heard that loud and clear tonight as we move into another school year and end this one well.
Ms. Ordigo?
Yeah, I was gonna ask a few of the things that Ms. Hummel asked, but I, I was, I know we said four classrooms. What is the capacity total though? Um, I mean, ten, the fact that it's only 10% of kids is good, but we have 11,000 kids total, so 10% is still what, 1,100 kids?
Right.
So it would be, it's on a rotating model. So the reason that, one of the reasons that we're looking at, the, the first one is the reset. It's a suspension program. So students would be there for three to 10 days, whatever their suspension is out of school. So they'll only be there for a short period of time. The idea is to use that time productively, about a 90 minute time in the morning to work with the counselors there to kind of adjust the behavior that got them there so they won't come back again. Uh, Lynchburg has started the program like this and they said they, their suspension numbers have gone down almost 90% because it does have the intentional piece, um, that sometimes when a student gets suspended and they go right back to the classroom, that piece of getting them there is missing. We're trying to make sure we're doing that.
Yeah.
Um, so each of the rooms would be 12 students at a time. Um, if we get to more than 12 students in the suspension center, basically we'll have to do a waiting list. Um, we, we came up with a 12 because that's with, um, national standards for alternative education and as well as the state standards for VDOE for a non-traditional program is around 12 to 1. So that's why we came with that cap of 12 to 1.
And, and just to clarify, that, that 10% is our students that had any sort of discipline, behavior response. If you remember, over 70% of those were at level one or level two. So, so that's not a thousand, 10% of 11,000 that we would be looking at.
You're talking about, it's like seven, out of the 216. And then of that 216, how many are middle and high school?
Right, correct.
And we're hopeful this is going to address what you've heard in our schools in terms of individual students needing more support than others. And we're hoping that this will begin to address that along with the changes in MTSS and the revamping of that. And really our whole focus on being out in the schools all the time, helping students and helping those who are serving them.
I think maybe our last question on this, uh, goal item, Donna?
It's actually five from Ms. Harris. They want her to use the chairs. My, my question is, given Sbar, and I'm assuming it has been tried in other, other states and other places, when will we start to see as a division some improvements in the disparities that we're, that we are seeing across in terms of discipline? And, and, and I think, and I also look at this as looking from a strategic plan perspective as we are moving into our next plan and thinking about, right, like I don't expect that it's gonna drop like this. But like what would, what would success look like, um, in terms of a year-over-year improvement? And then when would we start to, start moving more towards parity? Um, like how many years does that take?
So there hasn't been, the group, that, that number has not come out yet because like we said, there's only been, it's only the second year of implementation. Um, the division that I was in previously, we actually did the pilot the year before, so they are actually at year three. We, there are, you are seeing those numbers go down. However, with the way we are now as a state, the behaviors are ramping up. So now it's like, you, you gotta come, you gotta, you gotta come at it double hand now. So now we gotta combat the ramping up of behaviors with additional supports. So for us, like I said, it's gonna be a situation, like right now, we're already seeing the numbers in our supports going up. So then next year, with our administrators learning more, you're gonna see the behaviors are gonna shift. And then you're gonna see the responses shift in regards to our ethnicity groups. And then it's just gonna be like a, almost like a domino effect. As we start receiving, as we understand it more, you're gonna see differences in different parts of the data set.
Well, it may be three or four years.
I'd say three. I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful. I don't, I don't, I don't, I feel like that's too long, right? So I'm, I'm really, I'm, I'm very, very, I'm, I'm hopeful in what we've, what we've been able to accomplish in this short period of time. And I think that with everybody on board, and I will say that administration, they received it. They, they were ready, willing and everybody's asking questions. So that's a good thing. So I really think we're gonna see a difference in, let's do a year, maybe two. I'll give you three. Be optimistic. Thank you.
And I think the key is our expectations will remain high for behavior in the classroom outside of it.
Thank you so much for your, uh, reports, your presentations this evening on goal four and a half. Goal two, Dr. Keer.
Yes, uh, we're moving into the second goal and it, it is a big one too. It covers a lot of area. And I know this was a lengthy presentation and discussion of goal 4.5, but it was essential for us to really grapple and understand with the incredible work that's been done with attendance and behavior this year. So my pleasure to introduce, uh, Ms. Trot, who's going to take us through goal two and reference all of the many people who are involved. So my pleasure to introduce uh, Ms. Trot, who's going to take us through goal two and reference all of the many people who are involved. Uh, who are not speaking but present somewhere this evening, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Heron and good evening Chair Dow and school board members. On behalf of my goal two colleagues, I'm pleased to share updates on our strategic initiatives related to educational equity with you this evening. Goal two is comprised of six action strategies aiming to foster a learning environment that respects the diversity of students. And provides targeted equitable opportunities for success. Strategy two point one focuses on implementing a multi-tier system of supports framework, also known as M T S S. To provide interventions and supports appropriate for each student. Within this strategy, schools regularly analyze academic behavior and attendance data to determine additional resources students may need. Tier one strategies are for all students and represent the core universal practices for high quality instruction and social skills development. Tier two interventions are provided to a targeted group of students who need additional support to be successful. And finally, tier three interventions are provided to even fewer students who need more intensive and individualized support. Under the leadership of Mr. Nick Keer, Coordinator for Student Services, M T S S committees at both the division and school level. Levels have centered their work on enhancing our tier two systems and practices this year. Including identifying resources, progress monitoring and professional learning and collaboration. Additionally, each school's M T S S team updated their schoolwide behavior expectations in response to student needs after the pandemic, as you just heard. Including expectations for digital citizenship and supports for social emotional skills. Finally, to ensure school and division leaders can efficiently access aggregate data. From various sources and accurately monitor student responses to tiered interventions. Our team has been researching potential solutions to improve data interoperability and reporting. At the division level, our M T S S executive team annually completes the district capacity assessment or D C A. A self-evaluation rubric provided by the V D O E to evaluate our evidence-based systems and practices at scale. The chart shown here represents our overall progress as well as the instrument's three domains, organizational leadership, competency. And data systems decision-making. While we saw a temporary decline in our overall score during the pandemic, we have recovered our progress over the past two years. And are now exceeding our pre-pandemic score. This year we scored sixty seven percent overall, which indicates we are emerging beyond preliminary implementation. And seeing tiered practices embedded in our systems with fidelity. Our focus area for next year will be in the competency domain indicated by the gray bars. Competency refers to the fidelity, selection, training and coaching strategies we use to develop, improve and sustain our educators ability. To implement strategies to achieve desired outcomes. We recently received clarification related to this domain and as a team recognized that we had previously overrated ourselves. We would, we will have professional learning and coaching practices in place. And our next step will be to develop more formalized evaluation systems to determine the impact. Of that those coaching and professional learning initiatives on student outcomes. At the school level, school teams completed the tiered fidelity inventory or T F I, another rubric-based self-assessment. That allows them to pinpoint their areas of growth and improvement with implementing M T S S in their buildings. Over the last three years, tier one T F I scores have steadily increased across all school levels. The greatest areas of growth have been providing more explicit instruction on expected behaviors to students. Providing teachers with additional resources and tools to manage their classrooms. And a more systematic approach to recognizing students when they display successful social and academic behaviors. Areas of focus for next year include increasing collaboration with families, incorporating more student voice into decision-making. And providing peer coaching supports to educators. Strategy two point two promotes equitable access for underrepresented student populations to rigorous academic courses and programming. One of the key areas for this strategy is gifted education and talent development. Under the leadership of Dr. Anne Colorado, this year we have continued to focus on two main initiatives. The first, enhancing our gifted and talented identification systems. And the second, ensuring teachers have the instructional resources to extend learning experiences in the general education classroom. Efforts this year have included administering universal screenings in the fall, mid-year and spring to monitor student growth. That helps us identify borderline students, conducting professional learning on gifted education and talent development and how to refer students. As well as differentiated strategies for serving gifted students. Implementing an elevation lab grant at James River Elementary, which includes the use of Harvard thinking routines to support all students in kindergarten and first grade. And curating and distributing activities for teachers to extend learning for students who need challenges beyond the core curriculum. Regardless of whether they are identified for services, this includes our deeper dive math modules. Which are available for students in grades first grade through geometry to foster accelerated learning. And finally, we've been supporting collaborative planning between gifted and talent development resource teachers and general education teachers at all levels. At the secondary level, we focused on increasing awareness of honors and advanced placement programs. This year we hosted a virtual parent information night with the Governor's School for Science and Technology in which over eighty parents attended. We also hosted an advanced pathways webinar, which highlighted all of the advanced courses and opportunities available to W J C C students in middle and high school. We had a hundred and thirty-four live viewers attend this webinar and an additional fifty-four viewers have watched the recording online. Additionally, in consultation with work conducted by a gifted ad hoc committee. Our accelerated pathways for middle school math will begin in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And allow more students to receive advanced math curriculum, some as early as the fifth grade. Finally, our math cohort summer school experience focuses on STEM and foundational math concepts for rising ninth grade Algebra one students. From underrepresented populations who show potential for high achievement in high school math. These students will travel in math classes together over the next four years to ensure their readiness for an A P math course by twelfth grade. Last summer, we offered one pilot course for fifteen students and this summer will be expanding to two classes of eighteen. So it's exciting to see this program growing. Professional learning is essential to ensuring our teachers not only know how to refer students for gifted education, but also how to provide learning experiences. That elicit and foster their strengths and aptitude. Here you can see related professional learning sessions we've offered this year and the number of participants in attendance. By equipping our teachers with the knowledge, skills, attitudes and behaviors they need to create these conditions for success. We are confident we will see a more proportionate representation of all students in our advanced courses and programs. For progress monitoring with strategy two point two, students who complete advanced coursework typically meet graduation requirements. For advanced studies diplomas, for last year's class of two thousand and twenty-two, fifty-two percent. Of our nine hundred and eighty-eight graduates earned advanced studies diplomas. This graph represents the breakdown of that fifty-two percent by ethnicity. While we consistently have over fifty percent of our graduates earning advanced studies diplomas, much work still needs to be done to address disproportionality. Of student representation. Strategy two point three ensures all eligible students have access to high-quality preschool education that focuses on the whole child. And fosters kindergarten readiness. Under the leadership of Mrs. Amy Gulick, Principal of our Bright Beginnings Preschool Program. Key initiatives for this strategy include implementing the Virginia Quality Birth to Five requirements. Including the integration of early learning development standards in all three and four-year-old classrooms. Expanding the use of the class observation tool and increasing the number of class-trained evaluators from three staff members to seven. Allowing for our preschool teachers to receive more frequent feedback on their use of research-based strategies in the preschool classroom. Increasing the use of assessment data, including the V K R P, which measures literacy, math and social skills development. And teaching strategies gold, which assesses our four-year-old students readiness for kindergarten. Monitoring our enrollment data each month and providing social emotional support through collaborative leadership of our preschool task force. Home visit program, second steps curriculum and handle with care training of which a hundred percent of our bright beginning staff are trained. In monitoring student access to preschool programs, here we have captured the total number of students enrolled in Bright Beginnings programs over the past four years. Which is shown in blue, beside that is the number of students in the program who receive special education services, shown in orange. Currently, we have three hundred and fifty-eight students enrolled in Bright Beginnings. Sixty-five percent of those students receive special education services, which includes an additional twenty-one students. Receiving those services in uh, Head Start or private preschool programs, we also have sixty-one students on our waitlist.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes, sir.
Have the state standards regarding um, how to identify um, special needs students have, have those standards changed since twenty nineteen? Thank you.
In monitoring the high-quality preschool education provided by our bright beginnings teachers, here you can see that we have consistently employed licensed educators. In our classrooms, the majority of whom have graduate degrees or above in early childhood education. And also hold endorsements in early childhood special education. We're very proud of the exceptional level of well-qualified professionals that serve our youngest learners. Strategy two point four develops and implements expectations for positive relationship-focused classroom learning environments. Where student differences are appreciated and celebrated. To help us frame our work within this strategy, we've utilized Castle's rubric for implementing systemic S C L at the district level. This research-based framework has four focus areas, including building foundational support and a plan to ensure there is a shared vision. Communication, collaboration and aligned resources for social emotional learning among all stakeholders groups. Strengthening adult S C L through capacity and community building, promoting S C L for students by integrating the V D O E standards. Adapting evidence-based programs and practices and engaging in family and community partnerships and reflecting on data for continuous improvement. Under the leadership of Mrs. Jessica Walter, Director of College and Career Readiness. Some of our key activities this year include expanding our partnerships with community agencies, including the local recreation centers. And mental health organizations, using S C L grant funds to send thirty-four school counselors, you see there, very happy. To the Virginia School Counselors Association Conference, integrating responsive learner-centered classroom practices. And content-based professional learning sessions, having division team members participate in Castle's leading school S C L training. So we can better support their implementation. And a sunshine moment just from last Friday, we engaged a hundred and sixty-five support employees in positive behavior training. So they are better equipped with reminding, reinforcing and redirecting language to de-escalate um, situation. So I know it says one thirty-five up there, but the official numbers came in at the last minute and it was one sixty-five. As previously described, we are using Castle's district implementation rubric to monitor our growth. And this year saw improved indicator ratings in all four focus areas. In focus area one, we're making progress toward a more cohesive plan for systemic implementation. In focus area two, we've increased our professional learning opportunities for supporting students' social and emotional needs in the classroom. In focus area three, we are gauging students in grades K through twelve and academic goal setting, which is an overlapping initiative with strategical one point seven. That aligns with the self-awareness and responsible decision-making competencies in the video E's uh, S C L standards. And continuing to implement morning meetings at the elementary levels. And then finally, in focus area four, we see some crossover with our M T S S strategy. Where we will begin annually evaluating S C L implementation at the school level using a research-based rubric. Strategy two point five addresses inequities in facilities and educational programs. Under the leadership of Mr. Marcellus Snipes, Senior Director for Operations, projects for this strategy. Include a facilities condition assessment that was conducted last November to help us make informed decisions for capital improvement planning. Completion of playground accessibility enhancements at three elementary schools with additional schools planned uh, for the next fiscal year. And a cost analysis for addressing spacing needs due to the growth in the high school strings programs at Jamestown and Lafayette. Progress monitoring for this strategy, which you heard earlier this evening, is outlined in the proposed capital improvement plan. And those upcoming projects include the addition of the auxiliary gym at War Hill, renovations to enhance the weight room at Jamestown this summer. Replacement to the tennis courts and track at Lafayette and the Cooley Field Turf Project slated in the C I P for fiscal year twenty-five. And finally, strategy two point six focuses on implementing effective transition programs and activities designed to build a sense of belonging. Social connection and academic engagement. Currently, our schools support student transitions from one level to the next through activities such as orientations and school visits. At the division level, we also host our annual curriculum fairs and last summer, we piloted a career strategies course. For identified eighth grade students transitioning from Berkeley Middle School to Lafayette High School. This year we'll expand that course to include eighth grade students from James Blair Middle School. Finally, to provide additional support for special education students, our parent resource coordinator is currently hosting a workshop, currently, like right now. For parents of rising sixth grade students with I E Ps. Students and their parents participate in four modules focused on building academic and social behaviors to enhance their success. Develop self-advocacy skills and expand their independent living skills. And at the end of the workshop, they are going to receive some school supplies to support their organizational skills. This year, we also engaged in research and enhancement planning to consider how we might offer a more systemic approach to student transition. And support consistent expectations across all schools. Some of the actions have been some facilitating school counselor focus groups, conducting student focus groups at both the middle and high school levels. To learn more about their actual transition experience and gather their suggestions for improvement. Analyzing student outcomes from that summer career strategies pilot course. Reviewing research-based transition resources to inform our next steps. And also soliciting volunteers to serve on transition planning ad hoc work groups this summer, some of the projects. Those work groups will be working on are shown there. As we look ahead at what's next for goal two, our team's efforts will include creating more formal systems for evaluating coaching. And professional learning through aligned student outcomes, that's that competency domain that you saw earlier. Establishing criteria for rigorous coursework clas- classification, implementing new preschool curriculum. Continuing the playground accessibility projects, sharing strategies for building community in the classroom. And enhancing our student transition programs across the division. It is truly an honor to co-champion this work and behalf on our goal, of our goal two committee members, we thank you for your continued support and ensuring educational equity. For all of our students, we are happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Trot, that's a lot.
And I might have trimmed a little bit of it on the fly.
Lot of great information, any questions for Ms. Trot while we have her, Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I got a couple of things, um, one of the things is I I. Chatted with some, with a couple of you all reading about this, uh, I understand uh, values math.
Um, yeah, you know, uh, enhancing um, the the abilities of students to to do math. But um, I also want to make sure that, especially in the gifted area, that the arts and the humanities are receiving. I don't see that yet, uh, should be receiving at least as much if not more. Um, I I I I think that's really um, uh, really important, I know that. Uh, you know, uh, we've been doing STEM now for uh, ten, twelve, fifteen years now. Um, and uh, and literacy and uh, literature and writing. Uh, are 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 really critical and and really important. The other thing I'm I'm just curious about, I know something about this. Um, I, could you tell me a little bit about the stream and Hagerty phonemic awareness preschool curriculum?
Sure, I will, I will respond to your first question and then I'll yield to Mrs. Gulick for the second. Um, to your point about the advanced courses, depending on what student strengths are, right? We have students who may not be interested in going to college but have these wonderful strengths and talents in arts or humanities. So one of the things, that second bullet that you see on this particular screen is establishing criteria for rigorous coursework classification. When we do that, we're gonna be able to look at our program of studies and really pinpoint um, which classes we consider rigorous, so. You know, the traditional are your advanced placement, your dual enrollment classes, but we do have honors and advanced classes and other areas. The project lead the way classes, things like that.
What I'm seeing in this presentation is a big emphasis on math. I would like to see a presentation with just as much emphasis on the arts and the humanities, that's all.
Okay, thank you for that feedback, Ms. Gulick.
What can I answer for you?
Sorry, what was your second question?
Yeah, yeah, uh, I'd like, I I'm just curious about the streaming three and the Hagerty phonemic. Awareness preschool curriculum, I'd like to know about that.
Sure, so streaming three was actually created through Castle U V A. Um, it was one of the V D O E vetted curriculums that all preschools were asked to take a look at before determining the one that they were gonna choose. Um, we looked at three different curriculums. Um, we looked at three different curriculums in our curriculum review process. What stood out to us with Streamen three is that it has a direct alignment with our class observations that you're hearing about today, which are also mandated. Um, also a direct alignment to the Virginia Kindergarten Readiness Program, the assessment that our students are taking in preschool and kindergarten. And also a direct alignment to the new early development learning standards that the VDOE released last year. So we really, we felt very strongly that there should be a strong alignment between with those three um mandates. And it also is an extremely comprehensive uh curriculum that serves children ages birth through five. So the curriculum that's being used in the three and four year old classrooms, they have a toddler version that we can also implement in our two year old classrooms. Um, so it gives a lot of uh the ability to streamline, particularly with that curriculum too, given that it's it has a flexible nature. It it, the approach is of course whole child, like everything we do in bright beginnings. Uh, but it incorporates all developmental dom- domains. The flexibility within the curriculum allows us to really differ- differentiate for those students with disabilities.
So so it it and and part of the bright beginnings curriculum, uh, does it include um elements? Uh, that probably are are not part of this, uh, which would be um uh helping stu- having having kids learn how to apply that phonemic awareness to phonics. Also, um, how it ties into, because especially in the early grades down there. The reading, writing, spelling, phonemic awareness, phonics, they're all coming together or trying to come together. So I I'm always concerned, uh, I mean, I see a phonemic awareness program. I don't see a writing program. I don't see, how do you deal with uh with spelling? I mean, I, you know, I know invented spelling is sort of a dirty term. Uh, I think it's, uh, I I I think it's probably overused, but uh it clearly points to the developmental. Aspects of early lit- literacy, especially in those uh those first.
So interestingly, the reason that we actually kind of went with Hagerty phonemic awareness as a supplemental curriculum is when we reviewed Streamen three. The phonemic awareness component was the weakest of all components, strong math, strong literacy, uh, s- strong in all areas, actually. But the phonemic awareness piece we were concerned about. So we worked alongside Doc, uh, Mr. Walker, Robin Ford, and Robin Moore with, because they're using he- Hagerty in kindergarten three second. Um, so we chose the phonemic awareness component of Hagerty for our preschoolers so that they could get a more robust phonemic awareness. Uh, program and it also is a direct alignment with what they're going to be receiving in kindergarten.
And is this um uh solely for bright beginnings? Because we're we're talking about uh five year olds? Uh, I don't know.
Our students ages three through five?
Oh, we doing all of that with five year olds, four year olds?
We are doing all of that with threes, fours, and fives.
I'm, that concerns me because um um not only is it developmental. Um, children come in to that at different stages and I and I and I I hope that that's. Uh, being recognized because one of the worst things that we can do is uh convince students that phonics is reading.
Exactly.
And it's not.
So those are.
It's a mediating skill that's very important. Um, and as are some of the other ones, so I just.
Nice thing about the Hagerty is that it actually has two levels and we've ordered both levels. So there's a younger pre-K version and an older pre-K version that will be more appropriate for students going into kindergarten the following year. Um, and then of course, how the teachers use it will be based on on data. So using the Virginia Literacy Assessment at the beginning of the year?
I know all about.
Okay, that's how we determine.
I helped create it thirty years ago, so yeah, I know all about.
Determine which child, which child needs.
I'm just concerned about the direction that it that it's starting to go in and I I don't want, I don't, I don't want us to. Forget about the importance of those other literacy skills, especially in the, not just bright beginnings, but also first and second grade. So and I'm assuming, are we do, are we, is that also part of our first grade curriculum? Access to this kind of thing, yeah, or whatever you might be doing.
I can't speak to the first grade curriculum, but I do know that Hagerty phonemic awareness is being used K two.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yes, yes.
Great questions and comments, Dr. Beers, I appreciate it. Uh, Ms. Donner, do you have a question?
Yes, I have I have two questions. The first is um on the MTSS, could you remind me of what the average tier one TFI scores mean?
I appreciate that question, I wasn't sure about TFI.
I, you said it, I just couldn't remember. Tiered fidelity inventory, um, and so it's looking at the, so tier one is is what we're implementing for all students. It's our our core instruction across the entire building. Um, and it just systematically is looking at how are we teaching expectations, how are we aligning expectations with our discipline practices? Uh, how are we letting students know when they're doing the right thing? Uh, how are we looking at data and making decisions around it and how are we involving all of our stakeholders in all of that together? Um, so it's a um tier one, there's fifteen items with specific cor- uh scoring criteria. And the teams sit down and um determine kind of where they fit. Uh, primarily with the focus of identifying action items for the future. Um, so the, I'm not sure if I answered your question in terms of what the actual numbers are, but yeah.
That follows up with that is that, so on that slide where it shows the average scores. Uh, why is the high school so much lower than elementary and middle?
So um, one of the biggest places that actually the high schools have started to show growth is on. Um, the more explicit teaching of the behavioral expectations and then on the acknowledging of. When students are doing what we want them to do. Um, for various reasons, it's just taken a little bit longer to get buy in across all of our classrooms, I think, around some of those sorts of things. Um, and it's a process that we are really making headway with uh in the last couple of years. Um, but those two points, the elementary, middle schools just jumped quicker into really. Kind of pushing those kinds of pieces and the the high schools, it just took a little bit longer for. All of the faculty and staff across the building to see like, oh, this is going to work and it's sticking around, so we're going to get on board with it.
Thank you, that's helpful.
All right, any other questions around goal two, this presentation we received, Ms. Donner?
I do have a second question and that is around the.
This is number three.
Education, what?
I'm kidding.
It's number three. This, are we sure, is this a work session or is this an access?
Oh, no, I'm keeping score.
We've been here all night. My question is around uh two point two, the equitable access for underrepresented student populations. Um, I think during your presentation, you mentioned that there is more of the universal screening data and and um teaching teachers. How to start to identify, when do we, I, there's been a lot of concern in the community about the disparities amongst who is and gifted. And being identified, when do we expect to see some changes? And the question I'll ask in the other conversation is what would, what would good look like? Like, what are we trying to get to and what sort of slope of progress are we looking to see?
Should I yield to you, Mr. Walker, on that?
We we may, we may actually respond to some of that in an SBQ unless Mr. Walker wants to jump in right now?
I I think an SBQ would be perfect.
Yeah, Ms. Col- uh, Dr. Colorado leads this whole program, there's been quite a bit of work done. At at specific schools to to develop the ability to screen and identify students with. Gifted students earlier and across all student populations and so she'd be able to answer more succinctly and better for us.
Okay, do you need me to actually write it or does Ms. Aller have it?
I'm sure Ms. Aller has it written down already, it'll go tomorrow morning, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you all for for your um steadfast work here for us and the the presentation that we received on educational equity. Um, we'll move on now to uh our policies. So we have four to review this evening in advance of our May sixteenth meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Keyver is going to lead us through the four policies this evening.
Thank you, far be it for me to correct both the Chair and the Superintendent. I'd like to think that we have five on the agenda for this evening because one is double coded. Uh, as we continue to move forward with as many as possible.
That's why you're in the hot seat.
Thank you.
We we accept your correction, thank you.
The the more the merrier, first one this evening. Let me make sure that I, now that I've made that correction, let me just make sure I've got it right. Uh, the first one is I I B E A and G A B, it's a double coded policy. Uh, it is related to the acceptable use policy for the school division. I believe there's a state code provision that requires a a biannual or twice a ye- once every two years, a review of the acceptable use policy. So you've reviewed this within the five year window, but it's important that we bring it back to the board on a on a two year stead. Uh, this policy was um. Generally, we we made a a couple of line corrections, a couple of changes to the policy, but materially, nothing has changed within our acceptable use policy.
Okay, and I think we can all see that. Um, any questions for Mr. Keyver on acceptable use policy? I I B E A, G A B, if not, we'll move on to K B A, item eight two.
Yes, sir, K B A is uh was last reviewed in twenty sixteen. It is uh in essence, the school board's policy on FOIA's requests for information. Uh, this particular policy was, there was some revision language to help us more closely align with V S B A. We made a couple of wording and formatting changes. Uh, the legal and cross references were updated and we have also updated the regulation. To in include updated contact information for the school division's FOIA officer.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, we'll move on to K F A A, item eight three.
Yes, sir, Code of Conduct for Spectators, K F A A. Uh, we are recommending that though this was adopted in two thousand and four and revised in twenty twelve. We're recommending that this particular policy be retired. Uh, it's not that we don't have ex- expectations for our spectators. But we believe that that information is more appropriately captured within policy I G D J. Which deals with interscholastic athletics and really is fashioned after the Virginia High School League. Uh, information about member schools in their handbook.
So a policy committee reviewed I G D A, excellent, great. Uh, in a previous conversation, it was also discussed that um much of K F A A was already um. I don't want to say enforced, maybe I want to say enforced by V H S L rules.
Yes, sir, I think I think that with respect to our athletic handbook and our policy that that deals with interscholastic athletics. Referring back to the high school league, we are covered in terms of expectations for spectators.
Okay, and then lastly, eight four, uh, L B D, policy L B D.
Correct, right now, that policy is in the I section. Uh, we are bringing forward administratively and through the policy committee, a suggestion that that policy move from I to L. Uh, and it be uh placed in the L category uh to align with the V S B A policy. Uh, feel like there is uh some specific language that we wanted to include in a regulation, which you'll see mentioned there as well as the copy of the regulation. Um, the policy committee had good conversation about this and seemed to agree with our proposed changes.
Ms. Donner?
I just have one question to understand, so if I'm reading this, does, for home instruction, does the parent have to be a teacher? Or they can, because I know people do homeschooling but then have distance learning or will do it online. So I'm just curious about that second bullet point.
There there are, there are four, four bullets that are listed there in terms of the ability to provide home instruction. It's it's not um, it's it's or, I guess is the best way to say it. Holds a high school diploma or is a teacher of qualifications by the Board of Ed, provides a program of study, provides evidence.
Maybe it would be good to, because she was, you know, brought up that question, you know how you have the third bullet point says semicolon or? Maybe you say semicolon or under the first bullet point and the second bullet point.
We could do that.
Just so I'm clear, so you, so to do home, home instruction means for those parents that choose to homeschool?
Correct.
And so, so does the homeschool parent have to be a teacher? Or they, or it's, it's the or they can do a correspondence or such and such course?
Any one or multiple of these?
Correct, one or multiple.
Okay.
High school diploma.
Yeah, because the way it reads, it says the parents attend, if the, if the parent, and so to me, I would read it that you'd have to be able to check the box on all four things.
We'll make a a a revision to that to make it more explicit.
Okay.
Say like and slash or or.
Yeah.
Ms. Ortigo?
Um, just a quick question about the line that's being taken out, that that the division provides free of charge standardized testing. Did did we used to do that, now we don't, or?
We are, we are recommending that that come out of the policy. We have previously provided testing, but we believe that there are a number of available testing options for parents to take advantage of.
So that's, so that is not just changing the the wording, but we're changing our practice as well?
Correct, we are recommending that.
How many people um avail themselves of the standardized testing last year, you know?
Somewhere in the neighborhood, uh.
Five percent.
Five percent.
Of?
Of the six hundred, yes.
Hundred ninety-four students were registered as home instruction students and thirty-three took advantage of the division's opportunity to provide testing, so that's five.
Thirty-three total.
There are places to do it.
Correct, and we provide that information to the parents so they know where to go to have test, to 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 do tests.
I imagine those are not free of charge, is that the difference, or?
Correct, I believe that that is a difference. Did you, did you hear the question, Robin?
Do you want to come tonight?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Parents have several opportunities or um multiple pathways to demonstrate achievement for their students. One being achievement testing, such as the testing that is offered by the school division or through other vendors and online providers. They can provide a transcript or a report card from the program that the student may be enrolled in. And then the third option is to um submit a letter from someone who has either taught the child or has a master's degree. And can speak to the student's progress over the course of that year.
Okay, and does this encompass SATs?
We provide families with information about A A P testing, SATs, but we do not provide, we don't cover the cost of that testing.
And you, and we didn't before either?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions around uh L B D, shifting from I to L? And I think uh that in our next meeting, we'll see a a few more additional ors.
Yes, sir.
First set of bullet points, okay?
We'll have that uploaded so that if you're willing for it to go onto consent, you can see it in advance of.
Right.
Voting on it.
And that was my next question, if there's any objection to any of these four items going on our consent agenda? Okay, that's what we'll do. Thank you, Mr. Keyver.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, uh, move on to our action items, two action items on the evening. Uh, if there's a motion to approve the personnel actions as presented this evening, so.
It's Chair.
Dr. Beers?
We, I I moved that uh we approved personal actions as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Beers, is there a second on that motion?
Second.
You, Ms. Donner, uh, Ms. Aller, you call the roll.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Donner?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortigo? Mr. Dow?
Aye. All right, and uh on to nine two. Is there a motion to approve uh award of contract for request for proposal number nine dash two zero two three zero seven five seven? Architectural services for design of two preschool centers to Baloo Justice Upton for total cost not to exceed the lesser. Of five and a half percent or the construction cost of the budgeted design amount of three million seventy-four thousand nine hundred and forty dollars.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve award of contract for request for proposal number nine dash two zero two three zero seven five seven. Architectural services for design for two preschool centers to Baloo Justice Upton for a total cost not to exceed the lesser five point five percent of the construction cost. Or the budgeted design amount of three million seventy-four thousand nine hundred and forty dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Donner, is there a second on this motion?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Slash Ortego, Ms. Hunley? Any discussion on this item? For our, uh, design of two preschool spaces? None at all? Nobody wants, nobody carries about five and a half percent or?
I mean, I-
Seventy-four?
I was, but I asked my questions, I had to.
Right. Okay, Ms. Aller, please.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mr. Dow?
Aye, let's get to work. Get it done. All right, rounding out the evening, uh, board member comments. Dr. Beers, would you like to go first?
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
I, uh, I, I wanna, uh, also rec- uh, recognize, um, the, uh, uh, Teacher Appreciation Day, Week, Month, it should be all year round, and also the nurses as, as well. Um, I, I was particularly interested in the process, um, uh, where, um, the family life, um, um, curriculum program was, uh, reviewed and, and put together. And I urge parents to go online and, and look at that closely to see if you have concerns, if there are issues with some of that. Uh, I would do that. Um, I think, um, that's really, uh, just the other things that we, we heard tonight. Um, uh, we're, uh, we're, we are very much now, uh, get, gathering data systematically. There's still different ways of teasing it, doing things with it, but, um, I'm, I'm, I'm impressed with, uh, the fact that, uh, it's, it is, uh, more detailed and, um, um, and I think will be, uh, uh, will be useful, uh, to us. I really, um, and I think that's really all I'd like to say, just to, once again, um, commend the superintendent staff and, uh, and how well they, um, uh, made their presentations tonight. Very, very informative.
Thank you, Dr. Beers, Ms. Hummel?
Hi, I, uh, just wanted to thank all the speakers tonight. Well, not only the speakers, but all the people that did the behind-the-scenes work at putting those very lengthy presentations together and, and listening and responding to all of our school board questions. So, um, there's a lot that I, I, I think whether you serve on a textbook committee or you go into the classrooms or you hear these presentations, just the amount of, um, professionalism that is required of all of our, um, teachers and our administrators to educate all the kids in our school system. So I just, it's definitely a, there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes. It's not just showing up and teaching kids and the magic just happens. There's a lot of background and expertise and education that goes into it, so I just wanted to say I appreciate all of that. Also, big shout-out to the nurses, my mom was, uh, you know, big school nurse back in the day, so the school nurses always hold a really special place in my heart. And then drama holds a special place in my heart. I know a lot of us have gone to these high school plays, including, uh, Mean Girls for me and Big Fish, uh, most recently. And it's just, I continue to just be amazed at the talent that our, our high school students can, can put on. And, and big kudos to our, our drama coaches and all the people that support the drama coaches, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel, Ms. Donner?
I, uh, echo what Mrs. Hummel said, I was able to go see Mean Girls with my daughter and we loved it. Uh, she heard jaw drop a couple of times, but it was fun. Uh, we, I, I also just want to say thank you to Ms. Matthews and Ms. Golick as we vote, we, I had the opportunity to go to Norwich and Bright Beginnings and for me particularly to see Bright Beginnings, as we've just talked about, the preschool and design. I, I don't even, I don't, I didn't even realize, I knew that we were educated, all of the children in our community, but I didn't realize as we were looking at the most fragile of our children and, um, and how we are caring for those children in the buildings and, and how we have mixed classrooms of different abilities. And I just, uh, it was just wonderful to be able to see that and to have, uh, Ms. Matthews just share with us all the things that they're doing within Norwich, uh, which has a very large population of just students overall, um, and all the things that she's doing, so shout-out to them. And I also had the opportunity of joining Dr. Worley at the National Society of Black Engineers, um, closing ceremony that, uh, was down in Newport News. We have quite a few of our high school students who participate in that and it's sponsored by, uh, the Newport News Virginia Chapter of the Links Incorporated. And it was just wonderful to see these students who are getting STEM opportunities outside of our, uh, school division, but that this chapter has offered that to our students and they got to go to a competition, uh, in St. Louis and they got to build cars and do robotics, they even had an engineering of fashion, um, workshop that they went to. And to also see some of our JCC stu- WJCC students who are taking leadership opportunities in that organization. Uh, and so that was just wonderful to see and to experience with Dr. Worley. And with that, I'll conclude my comments.
Ms. Donner, Ms. Hunley?
Yes, I also am all about good drama. And, uh, I was not familiar with Mean Girls as a movie, only Mean Girls I encountered were in the bathroom in the high school, so I enjoyed that and I was not familiar with Big Fish either, I'd never seen that. But I liked the quote, be the hero of your own story, that really resonated with me. SpongeBob I had not watched since, for ten years ago when my children were, used to watch SpongeBob, but I never quite understood the whole, the, some of the scenes they would do, but I did understand this, this one that the middle schoolers did, it was really cute and I liked all the colors and the lights and it was awesome. And also I just wanna say, um, it's, um, Asian, American, Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander month, so to all our families that celebrate. Um, you're beautiful, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley, Ms. Ortego?
Yeah, there, there isn't much left now, but, um, yeah, I just wanna echo what people have said, that the amount of information that we took in today, that was, um, was, it was a lot, but it was all very, very important and, um, it's really relevant to everything we're trying to do. Um, so I appreciate all the work that went into that and, and just the amount of, not just the one into the presentation, but that goes into doing it every day. Um, and I also brought some of my kids to see, um, Mean Girls at Jamestown and we, we had a great time. Um, again, that, yeah, kudos to all the drama teachers and, uh, volunteers, as I know there's a lot of parents that volunteer, uh, to help and other teachers that collaborate and that is, um, and of course the kids that spend hours and hours and hours of extra time, um, in addition to all their schoolwork and everything they're doing. And I, you always get the sense that it's, um, it's more than just the fun of the dancing and the singing or the production, but that they really have a special bond and that it's a family and probably a, a memory and experience that will last those kids a lifetime. So, that's, that's fun to see too. Um, and I feel like there was something else, but, um, given the time, I will just conclude.
Thank you, Ms. Ortego, uh, Ms. Hunley, I think, uh, SpongeBob, I think part of the stique around SpongeBob is you're not supposed to understand.
Okay, that makes me feel better.
Right, yeah, I, uh, when, when I was deployed, um, I had won a, um, miniature like handheld DVD player playing Bingo. Um, and, uh, I had, um, a C-D box or DVD box of SpongeBob and I drove my sergeant crazy. Every moment we had, I was playing SpongeBob for him and, uh, yeah, drove him nuts. Um, but speaking about, a- and I won't belabor many of these points, but speaking about drama, um, as I'm listening to, and it wasn't dramatic, but I'm listening to our presenters this evening. Um, for a moment, my mind went back to Little House on the Prairie, you know? Laura Ingalls teaching in a small schoolhouse with a number of students and it was just that simple and just, uh, how different things have gotten. And I, I hasten to say complicated, not necessarily complicated in a negative way, but, um, things have grown and, and developed in such a way that we have to have some incredible professionals, um, doing this data-centric work uh, for the benefit of eleven thousand four hundred or eight hundred students, uh, three hundred. Um, and, uh, just how things have changed is just remarkable from my seat to kind of look at it and just, it wasn't many years ago that, you know, we had just single-room learning houses and, uh, yeah, things have just gotten pretty wild. But I appreciate all of the work of your senior leadership team, Dr. Haren and everybody behind the scenes, as it was mentioned, that, uh, puts these presentations together and, and really, um, does a really articulate job in e- expressing the need and the value behind all of these, um, these programs. Um, the one that I am really excited about are these restorative centers. And Ms. Hummel, you mentioned the ninety percent that you, you really care about, but I, I, I know that you care about the ten too.
I do.
I know you do, I think we all do. And that's what I'm really excited about, um, is, um, this time next year, having well underway this new location, this new area or arena where the ten can be nurtured in a safe environment and one in which does have restorative practices in place. Um, I took it off my screen, but all the different, um, opportunities to learn and to grow in that safe space. Uh, and really help these ten percent or even less than ten percent, I think what the number suggests, see their own value, uh, and why education should be important to them and to their families, um, to bring them back into the fold. Uh, I think it just benefits everybody, it benefits the ninety, it benefits the ten, and I think we're on our way into a better direction, uh, with this, with this initiative, so really grateful for it. And I think this is something our community really needs to get behind. And as our, uh, parents, maybe perhaps some of those ten percent parents are, um, presented with this opportunity that they see the opportunity that really is. Um, so with that, we'll move on to our upcoming events. Uh, we have our school liaison committee meeting on May third at eight fifteen here in room three hundred of the central office annex. Um, Teacher of the Year Celebration tomorrow at five. Um, that's at, that, is it Hennage, how do you pronounce that? I don't know how to pronounce it.
Hennage?
Hennage, you don't look certain either. Okay, Hennage, I like Hennage. Auditorium, uh, that's at the, um, uh, Art Museum at the Colonial Williamsburg, uh, three oh one South Nassau Street. Um, that's gonna be at five P.M. Our Career Ready Advisory Committee meeting on May tenth at three thirty here in central office room three hundred. And then our Special Education Advisory Committee meeting on May eleventh at six thirty, again here in room three hundred. And our Policy Committee, uh, meeting, um, in room one oh eight of central office on May twenty-fourth at eight thirty. And just as a, another plug, uh, for our board members to do, take a look at our SOP and, um, if you have any kind of recommendations that you would like our Policy Committee to consider and bring to the board, uh, do that before the twenty-fourth, please. Uh, upcoming meetings, closed session, regular session on May sixteenth, six and six thirty, um, beginning here in room three hundred and then pushing over to the James Blair Middle School Gymnasium. Then May six, excuse me, June sixth, June sixth, four and four thirty, our closed session, work session, uh, here in room three hundred. All right, we have our agenda set for regular meeting on May sixteenth. With that, this meeting is adjourned.